Welcome to the City Council's April 28th City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with all City Council, City staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, Interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and City Clerk Judy Heron. Judy, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again, welcome to everyone who is joining us. At this time, we are asking our City Council to remain on screen using those delightful webcams, and we will have staff alternate their webcams when presenting. For members of the public who are joining us, welcome again. And if you wish to participate in public comment, we do have the ability to unmute your microphone at that time. The mayor will call for public comment for each item, and it's at that time we ask that you use that little hand feature. It should be to the right of your name, and I'll be able to open your mic, and you'll have your three minutes to provide your public comment. You also have the ability to use the question feature, which is just a little question mark again near that hand feature, and you can type your public comment there, and I will read it aloud to the City Council. And we will also be providing the City Council all public comment that was received via web form. Again, that will be something I will be reading aloud in the three minutes that is allotted. So again, for members of the public, if you wish to speak on an item for public comment, use that hand feature or use the questions in the little question mark icon. I return the meeting to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. At this, the item on the agenda now is a report from closed session, and we do not have a report. Item G, Presentations and Proclamations. I would like to introduce the President and CEO of Samatay County Economic Development Association, Ms. Roseanne Faust, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the council. Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to walk you through a presentation on the Samatay County Strong Fund. I'd like to, you all received an email last night explaining the technical challenges that we had with the site. And before I begin the presentation, I just want you to know that there were 2,500 applications that were started yesterday. By the time the day finished, we had the portal open from 12 to 1:00. There was a period that we needed to take the portal down to actually fix some of the technical issues. But of the 2,530 that were started, 659 were submitted fully at, by the end of the day. There were 512 that were started in the first 22 minutes of the portal being opened. We had approximately 1,871 unfinished applications. Last night, there were two emails that went out from Flashlight, which is our secure server that the Samatay Credit Union is using. And one email went to all those that had submitted their applications and received a completed submitted message. The other email went to the unfinished ones, basically explaining to them different avenues of uploading additional documentation, finishing their applications, clarifying the sole proprietor issue, because sole proprietors with W-4 employees were allowed to actually submit applications. So I want to be clear with everyone. We've worked through this today. We've gone back to all the people that started an application. So between today and tomorrow, we expect to, we cleared close to 1,000 applications today. And just to level set the situation, with 2,500 started applications, if we, if every business was qualified, meaning they met the criteria, the need would be $25 million. So the small business need in Samatay County is intense, and I have some statistics as to the number of Menlo Park businesses that we know have an application submitted. We don't know if they've all qualified. So as I go through the presentation, I'll fill you in on that. But Samatay County Strong, if I could just go to the first slide. Please. I think Mr. Passman is, someone at the city is helping me with the slides.
Hello, all. This is Judy, the City Clerk. John, are you able to control the presentation, or did you want to pass control?
Roseanne, you should have control of the presentation.
Okay. So I will just do that. So, so Samatay County Strong, so back in mid-March, when the Silicon Valley Community Foundation set up a 10-county regional COVID-19 relief fund, that was COVID relief, emergency relief. They also set up a second fund at the same time, which was COVID emergency relief for nonprofits for Santa Clara and Samatay Counties. At the same time, or shortly thereafter, towards the third week in March, the Board of Supervisors in Samatay County wanted its own Samatay County Strong Fund, and they committed $3 million of Measure K funds to this Samatay County Strong Fund. $1 million was for financial assistance for individuals and families and eight core service agencies. The next million was for nonprofits, again, for the eight core service agencies, adding in seven homeless shelters. And the third $1 million was geared towards small business. The Silicon Valley Community Foundation is a 501(c)(3), could not distribute small business grants because of the IRS tax implications of a 501(c)(3) granting money to non-501(c)(3). So we quickly pivoted and found a great partner in the Samatay Credit Union, who I would like to say is not charging one penny for the administration of the small business grant assistance. They are not charging any type of administration fee. So, whoops, I'm just trying to move on to the next slide. So Judy or John, it would be easier if one of you could just advance the slides?
Please. I'll take control of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So moving on to the next slide, which is the ongoing fundraising that we are doing. So I explained all this already. The Samatay County Strong Fund mimics the community foundation funds in that it benefits individuals and families, nonprofits, and small business, but all the funding remains in Samatay County. So we've had $1,387 million committed by cities to augment the $1 million from the Board of Supervisors. And if we move on to the next slide, I just want to give a little background on federal and state dollars. So this is the second stimulus package, $484 billion in new federal pandemic relief, and that is for the Paycheck Protection Program that reopened yesterday. It's also for the small business idle economic disaster loans, $75 billion for hospitals, and $25 billion for coronavirus testing. And then today, if we move to the next slide, the California Portal for Pandemic Unemployment Assistance opened today. This pandemic unemployment assistance was authorized under the Federal Cares Act, and it is for those unemployed that are business owners, self-employed, independent contractors, for those that are not usually eligible for any type of unemployment insurance payments. So and then if we move to the next slide, I just wanted to give you an overview on federal and state, and then to go into the small business grant program. So with the small business grant program, grants up to $10,000. $1 million equals 100 grants. The grants can pay for payroll, operations, ongoing expenses, or other costs associated with COVID-19. And again, the credit union, they're, we based the model and the criteria on a lot of research that we did through San Francisco, Seattle, Los Angeles, San Diego. We looked at what other public and private funds were setting as criteria, and that's what we looked at for criteria. Plus, as we reached out to our business community, we said, what is fair? Because we had to set criteria that would fit 21 different jurisdictions, the 20 cities and the county of Samatay. And then there's a little note on there. Due to overwhelming demand, as I started the presentation with, we closed the portal for new applications Monday. Actually, yesterday. So if we look at the eligibility criteria on the next slide, it is a for-profit company with at least two employees. And here was the issue yesterday with sole proprietors. So sole proprietors can have W-4 employees. And there was miscommunication in terms of a sole proprietor, an independent contractor, and self-employed. And so we got that cleared up. We went back to anyone that got kicked off the portal as a sole proprietor with employees, and we've had them submit. Because as their email was entered into the portal yesterday, it was timestamped, because as many of you know from past presentations, it's first come, first served. So that timestamp of when they entered their email is how they're being prioritized. So they need to have a current business license, if required by the jurisdiction. They need to have an office storefront or business space that is open to the public. And the criteria is 2 to 10 full-time equivalent employees or less than 2.5 million in annual gross revenue. We asked that they be open at least a year, and that they could demonstrate a 25% reduction in gross revenue due to COVID-19. If we move on to the next slide, here's, here was my explanation. I figured it was probably best to start with this. In terms of the portal was open from 12 to 4:00, 2,500 applications. As of noon today, we have 992 completed applications. For the city of Menlo Park, as of 1:33 PM, we have received 42 completed applications. Now, that doesn't mean qualified applications. That means completed. So again, the credit union is looking at all the paperwork. But to give you an example, and as you're considering Menlo Park unrestricted city dollars, the $1 million grant allows Menlo Park to have 4.3 grants, but we're trying to get that rounded up to five, because we're trying to find money that we can round up every city to the closest next grant. So that would be five grants from the million, and then if you were to contribute additional funds, those Menlo Park businesses that qualify within that 42 would have access to those funds, and obviously, any additional monies that we raise. So moving on to nine, slide nine, the process for reviewing applications. The applications are reviewed by the Samatay Credit Union Community Fund staff for eligibility. The eligible applicants are forwarded to the county for just a final review. All eligible applications are funded in order of receipt. That is why the timestamp is so important. The grants will be allocated based on the source of funding. So first, the county, $1 million, so the five grants, and then any additional city money. As I mentioned earlier, 1,387. So the city of Burlingame has given $500,000, the city of Samatay, $400,000, the city of Redwood City, $300,000, the city of San Carlos, $112,000, Daly City last night, $75,000. Actually, I think this is on the next slide. I'm reciting this from memory. So there you have it. You have the cities that have contributed. The only one that I didn't mention was Colma at $15,000. Under consideration are the cities of Atherton and Woodside. Tonight, in addition to Menlo Park, we'll be doing presentations to the city of Millbrae, the city of Belmont, and the city of, and the town of Woodside. So that gives you an overview of the cities. If we move on to 11, we believe we did quite a good job in the program outreach and awareness, because from the Board of Supervisors making the decision last Tuesday to move forward with Samatay Credit Union as the partner, and not opening the portal until Monday, the 27th, we used social media, we used the Samatay County Strong webpage, Chambers of Commerce, Ethnic Business Group, Earn Media Cities and Towns. The application was translated into Chinese and Spanish. We also had translations for the FAQs, and I believe five other languages. So considering 2,500 started the application, we definitely got the word out. And then what is our need? If we move to the next slide, our need is great, and what we're asking for is to help us raise additional dollars. Our goal from the outset of this entire effort is to save as many of our small businesses as we possibly can. And so we look to you as the city of Menlo Park, we look to your residents, we look to the community, because that's, that is the bottom line. That is what we're trying to do. So I'm, I, Mayor Taylor, I appreciate you allowing me the time this evening. Thank you very much for the assistance on the slide presentation. I really appreciate that. I'm learning a whole host of new things in this process, so I think we all are.
Thank you, Ms. Faust, for the presentation, and I just wanted to follow up with the council to see if you had any questions. Councilmember Mueller.
Hi, Ms. Faust. This is Ray Mueller. I actually have a question from a resident who's a sole proprietor. They actually are a designer of art, and they design that art for local fairs and festivals and sell it. And all those special fairs and festivals have been canceled, and they've been trying to go through, determine where there is a place that they can go ahead and apply for assistance, or if it's just, if they're just left to unemployment assistance. And I know that you are the expert in this, so I was just very curious to know where, and they're listening, by the way, right now. They sent me their question earlier today, but they're listening. So if you could provide them any wisdom that you could share of what's available to them as a resource, we greatly appreciate it.
So thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I believe I left a voicemail for the business that we're talking about earlier today. We've tried our best to either communicate with people via email or voicemail. It's sometimes hard to return phone calls, so emails are great. I actually left my email, I believe, for this business, and I'm happy to repeat it. You can put it out there. For sole, for sole proprietors that do not have any employees, any W-4 employees, the small business grant program is not applicable. So the one place that we have found thus far for the individuals that have not accessed unemployment insurance, that have never received a W-2 from an employer, is the pandemic unemployment assistance through the state. But I have had this question multiple times, and I can tell you, one of my passions and my career trajectory has been research. So I am trying to find other programs that would fit sole proprietors that would, other than pandemic unemployment insurance. So I'm committed to finding something, and I'm even thinking, you know, if we're able to raise enough money for the small business grant and help those, what's the next thing that we need to raise money for? And there are a lot of individuals in this person's situation, and I feel like it's, it's important for all of us to think about them and try to figure out other resources. Not the greatest answer, but the best I have right now.
Councilmember Mueller.
The greatest answer is the most accurate one for the moment, so thank you. I would just offer to my colleagues, I know we can't do anything tonight, but what I would, coming out of the study session, what I would support is directing staff to go ahead and look and see if they can come back with a recommendation of any funds that could be contributed for the, for this grant program, so.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Roseanne, for all you're doing in the county calls, and your updates are really very helpful, and what you're doing is invaluable. I'm wondering, how do individuals who want to contribute to Menlo Park businesses, to Samcita Fund for Menlo Park businesses, how do they go about doing that to direct their contributions to Menlo Park, if that's possible?
Yes, so we've had that question by both individuals and small family foundations, and so we have a packet of information that I'm happy to send out to you. And we ask that the donations be directed to the credit union, for, especially from the business perspective, because the credit, Samatay Credit Union has also become a certified 501(c)(3), so they're going to be able to take in the c)(3) dollars from the Silicon Valley Community Foundation and have that piece of it, and then so the dollars can be directed to whatever the individual is looking for. They reacted very quickly to this, very similar to Redwood Credit Union after the Sonoma County fires. They turned around a 501(c)(3) status very quickly. So I have a packet that has the wire instructions, where to send a check, all of the information, and it gives a good overview.
Councilmember Carlton.
Hi, Roseanne. Thanks so much for that presentation. It was great. I just have a question on kind of how it works. In our staff report, which I'm sure we'll, we'll cover later this evening, there is a suggestion from staff on providing funds for this, and I completely support that. My question is, as the monies come in, thank you so much for being the one to take these in and deal with this. It's a Herculean task, as you've shown, just in the, in the sheer numbers the first day. If we give, just round numbers, if we give $100,000, is all of that earmarked for Menlo Park businesses? And is there any of the other funds available, or is it only that $100,000 that's available? I'm just wondering how it's divided up and how things are earmarked and how it functionally works, because I wasn't really clear on that.
Sure. So the initial $1 million from the Board of Supervisors is broken across actually 23 jurisdictions, and let me explain why. 20 cities based on population, and then they split the unincorporated into three areas. So unincorporated is North Fair Oaks, Coastside, and Other. So based on population, that's why Menlo Park has the allocation of five grants out of the million. If you were to give $100,000, that would go to the next 10 qualified businesses in Menlo Park. So the first five qualified businesses, and then the next 10. And then additional, we have additional money coming in through the community foundation that then is going to be proportionately allocated based on population to the cities. And then if folks wanted to, if Menlo Park residents wanted to direct specific funds to Menlo Park businesses, they would go in it. So it's fair across the board.
Okay. And again, I'm not saying that we want to do this. I'm just speaking theoretically to understand how this works. If a city, Menlo Park, whoever, decided that they wanted to have the money, tweak the rules in any way, shape, or form, or in terms of like this can apply to X business, are they able to do that? Or are the rules set in stone that you're implementing because it's, it's too much to deal with too many different rules and regulations? Or how much flexibility, if any, is there in how the funds are allocated?
So in the first round of allocations, all of what I'm talking about now, the criteria has been set, because that was the fairest way to do it across all 23 different areas. We had one outlier in that, because the city came in early, and it was the city of Burlingame, which, when a Burlingame business filled out the application, there was just one difference, and that was when they asked for full-time equivalent employees and/or 2.5 million in gross annual receipts. They had no employee count, and they had gross receipts up to 5 million. So they went, but every other criteria remained the same. So we have tried to keep it consistent across the board, simply because from a credit union perspective and an underwriting perspective, because they're looking at all the same documentation, because all the same criteria applies, that was how they did it.
Okay, great. And I'm asking this, I'm not saying we will do one or the other. I'm, I, as we go into this conversation, though, I would like to just better understand what parameters and what moving parts we have that we can discuss. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I think following up on that issue of criteria, right now, do you look at any other funds, relief funds that a small business may have received and use that? Or, and if, if that's not the case, can you give me some sense of the background on how you guys came to that, that, that position?
Sure. So Vice Mayor Combs, so as part of the application process, we asked that the business disclose if they've received other funds from other sources, but we did not use it as an eligibility criteria to knock them out of the process, simply because there's been such a demand for the Paycheck Protection Program for idle, for Salesforce small business grants, for a whole host of, Verizon had small business grants. I'm, I'm trying to think, I've been collecting data on all of them, and we were trying not to eliminate any business, because we know the need is great, and with the extension of the shelter in place, I'm even more concerned about the viability of our small businesses, because $10,000 for rent, operations, payroll, health insurance is, is not a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have a few questions. My first is going back to following up with interested candidates with email or voicemail. Is there a text option to communicate with Samcita?
There, there is not, right? We have email, because it's a, it's a great way to track it and put it in, load it into a spreadsheet. So that's why we've been encouraging people. I actually looked at the Excel spreadsheet of the calls the last two days to see, okay, did we direct them to Flashlight? Did we give them the technical information? It's a good way to track it.
I appreciate all of the, the follow-up that you're doing, so that even if the, the source of funds aren't, the person that's contacting you aren't eligible for them, you're still able to provide them with some other resource potentially? I do appreciate that. I have a couple other questions. Are there any other cities that are administering their own funds for businesses?
So Mayor Taylor, there are two cities. The city of Foster City did a program following the same criteria that we've used, but did it through the city manager's office. So they took in all the paperwork, they reviewed the grants, and then issued the checks. I believe that that, it was my understanding, and I heard this in a presentation, that they received 90 applications and had, they had enough funds for 50, so about $500,000. Because on my sheet, there were 40, let's see, there were 39 Foster City businesses that applied to the Samatay County Strong Fund, Small Business Assistant Grant. And then the city of South San Francisco, I believe it was yesterday evening, decided to do loans to small businesses, and they're going to do them on a lottery system released in phases, so in May, June, and July, and they would be using community development block grant funds. And so there's a, there's a, as you're all aware, there's a deep set of criteria that is attached to CDBG funds, and we just didn't have the capability to administer that, because literally, our small small business grant program was built from the ground up, because nothing else existed.
Thank you. And I'm thinking specifically about family-owned daycares, and I'm sure you've been contacted by a few people about this. What's available for someone that owns a daycare, a family-owned daycare that's run out of their home?
With childcare, if they are a for-profit childcare that has employees, W-4 employees, they were eligible to apply for the Small Business Grant Program through the Strong Fund. Today, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, there was an allocation through the other funds that has come in regarding nonprofits that are not essential services. And so while I believe, you know, childcare can be considered an essential service, and it's really allowed essential workers to work and people to, I know I had my children in childcare, and I'm eternally grateful for those folks. There were funds set aside for the county administering that. Then the Silicon Valley Community Foundation also has another separate childcare piece. I know the city of Sam Mateo last night allocated rental assistance for family childcare. So trying to collect all of that between the four Cs, the Childcare Coordinating Council of Sam Mateo County, first five, and buildup for Sam Mateo County, which is trying to get more childcare slots built, they're collecting that data as well.
Thank you. And my last question is, I know that this fund is for the county, but can be specific, if the donation is specific about being for Menlo Park. Can you give me an estimate or a guess of what you would think the need would be for the city of Menlo Park, total dollars? You said that, I think you had a number of 25 million for the county was needed. What do you think that the city of Menlo Park needs to help support its small businesses?
So right now, based on just earlier today, and we still need to clear more of the unfinished applications, but there were 42 businesses that had submitted applications for the fund. What I can't answer for you right now is because the underwriting process has to happen. We want to get all the applications cleared, so that their place in the queue is secured, so that doesn't shift around. So today, it's 42. If all of them qualified, and there were only five grants from the county funds, that would leave a balance of 37 businesses. So, I mean, I would estimate the need in Menlo Park, and this is a real ballpark right now, is anywhere between $370,000 and probably $600,000, simply because I have to allocate more businesses coming in, or take into account, I should say, not allocate.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And a question I still haven't asked, Ms. Herron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Hello, Mayor Taylor. I did not receive any public comment via webinar on this item. However, at this time, for any of our members of the public who are with us live, if you can engage that hand feature, I can turn on your mic and you can provide your public comment on this item, which was a presentation by Sam Seda. Just a couple more seconds. Seeing none, Mayor? Proceed with the meeting. Oh. My apologies, it does look like we have one hand raised at the moment. It's Dana Chung. Hi Dana, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine, thank you.
Wonderful. So you are ready to go?
Yes.
Start?
I am, thank you. My name is Dana Chung, and on behalf of Community Equity Collaborative, I want to thank everybody on this call, from both Sam Seda as well as from the Menlo Park City Council, including Mayor Taylor. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to highlight an item that actually Mayor Taylor had mentioned in her question, which is that of childcare providers, who during this pandemic are providing a very critical infrastructure, but one that is at dire risk of crumbling over these next few months. And I just wanted to point out that even before COVID-19 hit, Menlo Park's residents depended on the support of 58 licensed childcare providers. These businesses operate on razor-thin margins. Now, all but six of them are closed, and of the programs that are offering support to essential workers, most of them are actually losing money, since parents are keeping their children out of group care settings. I'm not sure if the council is aware that actually county, state, and federal relief programs for childcare providers are leaving a huge gap in funding to the tune of $9.6 billion per month, according to the National Women's Law Center. And even before this crisis, Menlo Park itself was in a childcare crunch, with a shortage of 1,471 childcare spaces needed. If we do nothing now to shore up our childcare system, it will cost our city in the short run, based upon our ability to provide for those essential workers, and those who are in non-traditional or extended hours kinds of roles. But it is actually the childcare infrastructure that will be needed for our longer-term economic recovery, and to replace it is one that is incredibly difficult, due to a combination of local permitting and state licensing requirements, the lack of usable and affordable spaces, and the extreme developmental expenses and timelines that make childcare centers one of the most complicated businesses to open. As I mentioned, without childcare, many of our businesses will be unable to return to work. And so as we continue during this conversation, I would just ask the city to keep a couple of things in mind, that first of all, that they allocate the CDBG funds to in-home providers. As was already mentioned, the city of Sam Mateo voted last night to designate $120,000 out of their contribution to Samaritan House, to provide home-based childcare support, and also to direct funds to the also-mentioned COVID-19 childcare project out of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, in order to preserve the supply of childcare in Sam Mateo County. We really believe that this is a critical infrastructure piece for all other small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. At this time, we do have one more hand raised. This is going to be Jen Wallison. Jen, give me just one moment to unmute you. Jen, are you able to hear us okay?
Yes, good evening, City Council. Jen Wallison, Menlo Park resident, and I just wanted to speak out in support of our small business community, and to encourage City Council this evening, in the many discussions ahead, to think of using the Economic Stabilization Fund further, and more cuts to the CIP program, kind of where there are nice-to-haves, thinking of deferring them if possible. As we all know, our small business community is the heart of our community. I think of Cafe Zoe, the Bagel Shop, all the places that we love. So as they are doing their part, staying open, many of them during this time, and having to stay closed, I think we need to do our part to make sure they're going to be here when this is all behind us. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jen. Mayor Taylor, at this time, I see no more hands raised. I have no questions that have been posted. I return the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Herron, and thank you for the public comment. Is Ms. Faust still on the line?
Yes, Mayor Taylor, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting, and thank you for your patience. I sometimes forget about public comment, just because of our setting, but I'm glad that you stayed, just to listen to some of the concerns from our residents. I really do appreciate that. And if you had anything you wanted to follow up on, it would be appreciated.
Mayor Taylor, I want to thank you and the council. I'd like to thank your team in Menlo Park, your city manager, John Pass, Starla Jerome-Robinson, John Passman on your team, as well as Judy Herron, the city clerk. All of them have been just very supportive of working with Sam Seda to get the presentation tonight. I hear loud and clear the childcare story. I hear it up and down Sam Mateo County. I'm actually quite involved, being on the first five commission and the buildup advisory. I know how important that is, so my commitment is that I'll continue working on it, as I will continue working on finding more dollars for small businesses. So I want to thank you for your time, thank you for all that you're doing as a council and a community. This is a very challenging period, and I really appreciate the support.
Thank you, Ms. Faust. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing with Sam Seda. And good luck on your next presentations this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to, I am going to reorder the agenda. We, oh, Vice Mayor Combs?
Well, I just wanted to, so I know that Councilmember Mueller had sort of gave direction to staff, was it clear that that was something we all supported as a council, as far as giving direction to staff to follow up on this and to come back with recommendations? Or, I could have just missed that, but I wanted to clarify.
I believe that that would be discussed during our study session. Councilmember Mueller, just to clear, just to make sure we're all on the same page, the comment you made earlier, was that, did you want to discuss that during the study session?
No, not, I don't think it needs to necessarily, because I'm not sure that tonight would be the night to allocate the funds, but rather to go, we certainly something that we can talk about with staff, as we're talking about the number of funds. But what I actually would like to do is have staff go back and look and see if there are, come back and give us a recommendation as to what they think works within the budget picture, so.
Okay, Councilmember Carlton?
I have to look in my notes, but I think it is actually somewhere in the agenda that we're going through today. So if we can discuss that tonight, we'd be happy, because I agree with Councilmember Mueller, it's something I think we should orbit on, but I do believe it is actually in our agenda, and I forget where it is, I'll have to look and see.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Like I said, I don't want to get ahead of myself in terms of the discussion of where I'm going to be on the CIP. So, but, but I realize that, I mean, I realize staff's made a recommendation of Sam Mateo on that, so that, but I guess you'll find out more when I think about the CIP discussion.
Mayor, if I may, just to clarify, I think the staff recommended $70,000, and that's part of the budget action item that's on the agenda tonight. Yeah. So I would be happy to discuss that further.
Councilmember Nash, did you still have a question or comment?
No, I was actually going to say exactly that, that it's $70,000 within the budget document, or staff report. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So I believe we were at the point of reordering the meeting, and we will hear item I-2 first, and that is on regular business, to review projected revenue shortfalls resulting from the COVID-19 emergency, adopt a resolution number 6556, amending the city council adopted fiscal year 2019-2020 general fund budget, and approve a budget strategy for fiscal year 2020-2021. To introduce this item is Assistant City Manager Nick Pogero and Interim Administrative Services Director Dan Jacobson to make the presentation.
I need to go back to GoToWebinar, or GoToWebinar School. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, vice mayor. I'm happy this evening to walk us through the beginning of our fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendments and the strategy for our upcoming budget. My name is Nick Pogeros, and I'm the Assistant City Manager. I will move on here quickly. So just by way of agenda, I will start with an overview of the requests for direction from council, then our Assistant Administrative Services Director Dan Jacobson will walk us through two very distinct discussions, the first being fiscal year 2019-20, the second being strategy for next year, and then we will recap the recommendations. We will recap the recommendations at the end. Sorry, technical difficulties here, just one second while I figure out how this. Okay, there we go. So we will move on to, oh, I'm sorry, I cannot see the screen, very good. Okay, so just moving on here, to just summarize the direction we are requesting from the city council, the first action this evening is to amend the 2019-20 city council adopted budget. That amendment, in summary, takes advantage of balancing the shortfall from the COVID-19 emergency, using estimated salary savings that have been realized up to this date, as well as projected through the end of the fiscal year. We have a number of unspent non-personnel funds that arose due to modified operations, resulting from the COVID-19 shelter or stay-at-home. And then, as was mentioned earlier, there is a recommendation to modify the current year budget to include use of the Economic Stabilization Reserve to balance the budget, and then additionally, should the council desire to help fund the presentation from Ms. Faust earlier. Then we'll move on to the 2020-21 budget strategy. In there, we will walk through the revenue estimates and some of the assumptions that are used there, so we'll want to confirm the council's comfortable with those. The additional areas of savings that we will be focused on is personnel budgets, either through negotiations or layoffs if necessary, continuation and additional non-personnel reductions, and then finally, use of the Economic Stabilization Reserve or capital funds to fulfill whatever's remaining at the end of those first two exercises. So Dan helped put this little graphic together, just to give a sense of where we are in the budget timeline. The current year's budget was adopted on June 18th. It was adopted as a balanced budget. As you know, on March 11th, the city council ratified the city manager's proclamation of a local emergency, and then shortly thereafter, the stay-at-home order was issued, which effectively shut down all of our operations in that proximity, in that proximate timeframe. Most of our operations that are heavily affected are those that provide services in sort of a congregate setting. Those include our library, community services, as well as related services the community enjoys, such as pool operations, although those are operated by a third-party contractor. This evening, we are formally presenting the council with the information that has been touched on a couple of times in recent city council meetings. We're seeking your direction, so that on June 23rd, we can return with, to you with a proposed budget for adoption. We're seeking your direction so that on June 23rd, we can return with, to you with a proposed budget for adoption. We are required as a local government to adopt a budget by June 30th of the fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30. And then as the council may be aware, mid-year budget review occurs generally in January. One of the aspects of this chart, or this diagram that I do want to point out is that the arrow and the size of the sort of bubbles that are in there represent the level of uncertainty and assumptions that may go in. So as we go back to June 18th and March 11th, those are fairly, those happened in the past. We know exactly what happened. But going forward, we don't know what's going to happen, and that's really an underlying message that we would like to reinforce as we go through the presentation. Just high-level assumptions, and Dan will be happy to answer any specific questions about revenue or expenditure assumptions. But we're anticipating that there are subsequent waves of the COVID-19 emergency, and those come in a variety of different forms, the first being relative to social distancing guidelines. We learned today that the governor has provided some clarifying guidance on what stage two of the reactivation or the reopening of the California economy looks like. As the council knows, the state adopts the social, certain social distancing requirements, and the local health officials also have the ability to adopt requirements on that level as well. So I think one of the key elements here is understanding the interplay between those various efforts. When the governor says, for example, that he would like to see schools opening in July or so, that we fully understand what that means for our operations. He does, his statement, I believe, did focus on the fact that we're, we aren't going, I think his quote was, "We aren't going back to the way things were until we have immunity or vaccine." And that as we reopen, we will have to look at modifying the way we do things. So elements like our community services program and our library program, we will need to look at how we maximize social distancing and implement best practices. And adapt as other mitigation efforts move forward, whether they be testing or tracing. And then sort of the additional wave that I wanted to point out here, which is a very difficult one to quantify at this time, is the economic instability. The first wave of COVID-19 was a shutdown, the great pause. Revenues literally went from 100% to zero overnight in some of our areas. And we don't know, once the economy does reopen, what the long-term effects of the COVID-19 great pause will have, whether that leads to a deep recession or potentially worse. As you know, we have significant unemployment resulting from this event. So I do anticipate that there, we do anticipate that there will be a second wave of economic instability, which is important to remember as we look at balancing this year's budget as well as next year's budget. As I mentioned earlier, assumptions need to be made about resumption of congregate activities. When is it that it's safe for folks to reopen in the library? Or for us to resume some of the pre-COVID-19 services? And then finally, one area that is, that the council may be aware, there's really no, there's no certainty as to whether or not the federal government will come to the aid of local governments. And we do not have the benefit of being able to print our own money or buy, or do quantitative easing. We are required to balance our budget on an annual basis. And that really is the purpose of this evening is to get council direction to balance this year's budget as well as prepare a balanced budget for next year. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dan Jacobson.
It looks like we missed a little bit of what Nick said there, but thank you, Nick. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city councilmembers. Wanted to start with, as Nick mentioned, there are really two distinct pieces here. So I wanted to start with fiscal year 2019, 20, since that's what we're in. And if you could advance the slide, we'll do a budget overview. So very briefly, Nick had the timeline, but wanted to add just a little bit more context. And then we'll dive a little bit deeper into what each of these categories are. So the budget was originally adopted in June, which feels very, very, very far away at this point. And some of the impacts by COVID-19 since then are an estimated 8.1 million in anticipated revenue shortfall. And that is again through June 30th of 2020, which is the end of the fiscal year. So many of these impacts came at the end of the fiscal year. But this is the, we are showing these as the accumulated total at the end of the fiscal year to our best estimate. There are also $5.6 million in likely expenditure reductions which have been identified. And that results in a 2.32 million deficit without additional action. And that's really what, what brings us here for this piece of the requested direction from council is addressing that 2.32 million deficit. So we've prepared a recommended, a set of recommended amendments for your consideration, and that's what we'll work through in the next few slides. The table shown here is the same one as table two in the staff report. And this item highlights the adopted budget numbers as well as the year-end estimates, given the information available as of last week, which was when this report was finalized. We do try to keep as up-to-date as possible. None of these have changed materially to our knowledge since last week when it was published. I'm just working on the most impacted categories here. You'll see in order transient occupancy tax, also TOT or hotel tax sometimes called those sometimes. The largest amount at 3.5 million. This is the result of TOT being heavily influenced by business and leisure travel, which have essentially shut down in recent, since the stay-at-home order probably saw a slight dip before that and are anticipated to not be particularly active through the end of the fiscal year. The next largest category is charges for services in the community services department. So Nick mentioned that this is being some of those congregate services. As they were suspended, the revenue collected from those essentially turned off, as he said, overnight. And then there are also several other categories such as sales tax, which is affected by decreased activities in retail and restaurants. And then other categories to lesser extents. In total, the estimated impact on the general fund revenue is estimated to be 8.01 million. And again, that is at June 30th, 2020. So moving on to the expenditure side, I'll start with personnel expenditures. So as a service organization, this category accounts for the bulk of the general funds annual expenditures. This category, or this table outlines the same categories adopted, year-end estimates and recommended amendments for this, for personnel expenditures. One thing that I would like to note is that the city budgets a vacancy factor annually. This is in recognition that there will be some unfilled positions throughout the year. This amount, which was 1.2 million in fiscal year 2019, 20, is budgeted in the non-departmental budget. And that's just a recognition of the fact that these vacancies can't necessarily be predicted in advance. So the recommended amendments outlined here do two things. One is reallocating that vacancy factor to the departments which actually experienced vacancies throughout the year. So it moves the vacancy factor out of the non-departmental budget into the department's budgets. And then it further reduces planned expenditures as a result of savings which are above and beyond the vacancy factor. And those savings total 2.26 million citywide. And again, this is just for personnel and the anticipated amount at June 30th. So all of the accumulated vacancy savings as well as additional savings which will be realized between now and the end of the fiscal year. So the remainder of the expenditures are non-personnel, and they vary across categories, including things like utilities, services, and repairs and maintenance. These estimates are shown here, which is table four in the staff report. The year-end estimates shown incorporate a number of changes, including expenditures which are no longer necessary to the suspension of operations, deferral of one-time expenditures, and reductions where available. I would like to point out the single largest expenditure in here, that of 1.5 million dollars shown in the non-departmental budget, was a contingency budget that was adopted by the council at the beginning of the fiscal year in anticipation of revisiting some budget priorities. That amount was never earmarked and could therefore be released. So these expenditure reductions total 3.43 million, and once again, through June 30th, just to keep the same frame of reference there. So the two prior categories that, or the three prior categories that we looked at, the revenue shortfall and expenditure reductions don't quite balance out, which is why staff is recommending the use of reserves. So this would, the use of reserves would avoid a budget deficit. And again, going back to the reason that we are discussing the fiscal year 1920 budget tonight. So the city council has a longstanding policy which regularly commits some of the general funds fund balance for use in extraordinary circumstances. It's been talked about and mentioned a couple of times tonight. I don't know that I heard economic stabilization, or that I heard emergency contingency, but it does have three categories. So emergency contingency for use in emergency situations, strategic pension reserve, and economic stabilization. So the last one, economic stabilization, is probably the most applicable to the COVID-19 situation. But these committed fund balances are fully at the city council's discretion to use. So the fund balance for the economic stabilization fund at the beginning of the fiscal year was $14 million. And that's shown here. And so the use of reserves would draw on that fund balance. And so there are three categories shown here, pessimistic, most likely, and optimistic. The recommended budget amendment is to use the pessimistic number, but consider that a not-to-exceed number. And just to be, just to go a little bit deeper into the mechanics of how it would work, this would be the last tool used to balance the budget. So it would only be used to the extent absolutely necessary. That is, to the extent that revenues exceed expenditures, the last use would be the use of reserves. So the other item that has been mentioned a couple of times tonight and was in the last presentation is SAMCITA and a potential donation to the San Mateo County Strong Fund. So this recommended amount by staff is 70,000. But this is again, very much up to the city council's discretion as, to their desire to include this or not include this. It would be also a use of those reserve funding monies. So it's just a visual representation of the amendments which staff are requesting direction on. The revenue shortfall for the current year is shown as the entire area of the graph here. And the aforementioned categories are represented in proportion to closure of that deficit. So in the darkest upper right section is personnel. The bottom is non-personnel expenditures, and the light upper left section is the use of reserves. So you'll notice in the legend that there's also the use of capital, but it doesn't emphasize as that is not one of the recommended levers for use in fiscal year 2019, 20. So to combine all of these things for fiscal year 2019, 20 into a single place, staff is recommending the following budget amendment, which is also outlined in exhibit A of the resolution attached to the staff report. So these include revenue reductions in TOT, sales tax, and charges for services totaling 8.01 million. Personnel changes, which would reallocate the adopted vacancy factor and further reduce expenditures by 2.26 million. Removal of the 1.5 million contingency budget adopted but not currently allocated to a purpose and reduce other expenditures by a total of 1.93 million. And finally, appropriate funds from the reserves for the San Mateo County Strong Fund if desired. And to close the budget deficit, an amount anticipated to be 2.32 million, but not to exceed 2.9 million. And so at this point, considering that we have, as mentioned before, we really want to break this into two very discrete points where we're asking direction from council, I would like to pause and ask if any members of the city council have questions or comments. And we can definitely answer those about the recommended budget amendments at this point.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. Dan, thank you for all this information. How did the number 70,000, how was that arrived upon for the SAMCITA?
So I would defer to our Economic Development Division. But I believe that number was their anticipated savings in current year expenditures. So as we were going through the budget and trying to take a look on a more granular level at which things could be deferred or avoided due to non-operation during the closure, that was the number that was identified, I believe, in their division. But I would have to defer to them for a little bit more context on that. But, but I would say that that's, that was the recommended number, but it's very much up to council's discretion if they would lower, like to increase or decrease that number.
I was just wondering what thought was behind that amount. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton had a question too.
Hi, Dan. Thank you for that. That was a, I know it's hard to throw this together when you have to make so many assumptions on things that we just don't know at this point. But I'm curious, just in how you did your accounting. We voted in our last meeting to take the TOT, and it won't be paid to us in July. It will be paid to us in September. Have you accounted for that in this year with this year's funding, knowing that it's coming in? Or is that something that's a known quantity that's been left as a deficit in this budget and added into next year? I know it's, either way, it's fine. I was just wondering how you did your accounting.
So this is very much the difference between budgeting and accounting. And so the city's accrual period actually runs for two months past the end of the fiscal year. So because those TOT collect, the amount collected for TOT during that period would be during the current fiscal year, we would still record it within the current fiscal year. As long as we received it at that time, so the council determined to waive fees until July 31st, which is within the accrual period, so that amount would be recorded within the current fiscal year.
I believe we actually said September 30th.
I will have to double-check on that one.
Okay, that's fine. And then I, I'm just looking at my notes. On the cuts for permits and licenses, there's still some work going on that is critical work. You know, health and safety, things like this. So there are some licenses, a pittance compared to what we normally do. And I was wondering what your assumptions were on the permits and licenses. And we don't know what's going to be eased up in the, in the county's thing later this week. I know that so many of us are hoping that they ease up on the ability to work on homes so that people that are, for example, 90% finished with their house and they're living in an apartment can actually not go bankrupt trying to finish it. I know those have already been done, but I'm wondering, did you make any assumption for any coming in at all?
And so I don't know that we made an adjustment for permits specifically, but certainly for categories such as planning fees, which can be conducted remotely and don't require operations within the office. There is some allowance for those to be non-zero after March 16th, which is sort of the case for some other categories of services.
Sure. And I asked just because I, we work so hard to hire good planning. And, you know, the people in that department, we want to make sure that we can keep them busy if we can, as well as making sure our budgets get balanced. And so I have one more question. Well, I'll take it to public comment, and then we'll swing back around to it. I did forget to thank earlier San Mateo County Credit Union for the generous support that they're doing in putting these things forward. But I'll ask the rest of my questions in we, after we take some public comment. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs has a question. Vice Mayor Combs, we're unable to hear you.
I think that was like my first time doing that. So I wanted to go back to table three, and I'm sure you explained this, and I just missed it. But I wanted to sort of dive into that, the non-departmental section. So these are personal estimates. And I know that you were saying like historically, the vacancies get And I know that you were saying, like, historically, the vacancies get, or sort of registered there, and here you're sort of dispersing the departmental vacancies within the departments. But so the adopted budget for that was, was about 100,000, and then the sort of year-end estimate is about a million dollars more. Can you explain to me what that additional million dollars is again?
So that's essentially moving that vacancy factor out of the non-departmental budget. So we start with putting the vacancy factor in the non-departmental budget as a negative number. So it actually reduces the expenditure by 1.2 million dollars. And then the difference there is moving it back out is what would cause that year-end estimate there. Given that there are very few staff who are allocated to the non-departmental budget, it doesn't, it's, it would reduce the expenditures to a negative number. So it's really just, it's moving it out. So it's moving a negative out into the other departments, which is why it's estimated to go up. And then the balance there is largely the additional payments to CalPERS. That's most of what the personnel cost in the non-departmental budget is.
Councilmember Mueller?
Hey, Dan. Great presentation. Question for you. If we decided we didn't want to approve up to approximately 3 million dollars from the reserve, where would that money come from alternatively? Because 3 million dollars from reserves is about 20%, of the reserve. So where would that money come from otherwise?
So there are essentially two choices. One is greater reductions in other expenditure categories, or the other would be unassigned fund balance.
What do you mean by unassigned fund balance? Explain that.
So there's a portion of the general fund balance which doesn't have an assigned purpose. So there are various categories, such as the committed amounts that we talked about before, the reserves. There are some which are assigned for other uses, things which include mitigating impacts of development on the Menlo Park City School District. There's an assigned fund balance for that. And so once, once all of the various categories of assigned and committed are removed from the total general fund fund balance, whatever is left over is the unassigned amount.
Okay, so, okay. So if we were to say to you tonight in the study session, Dan, we don't want to spend 3 million dollars from the reserve, basically that would mean, because it's a study session, you guys would go back and come up with different recommendations for us, how to make up that shortfall?
So this is actually a regular business item. So you can give us direction to actually make changes to these amendments.
Right. So we're able to say to you tonight, I'm sorry, and if we said tonight to you that we didn't want to make, we didn't want to be the ones making that recommendation, we wanted staff to go back and give us a recommendation on that, is that something that you guys could do on time to make up the 3 million shortfall? So we did everything else tonight, said not comfortable with this amount of money coming from the reserves. We'd like you to come back with us and figure out that portion of.
So then the direction we would need is to find an additional 2.3 million dollars in expenditure reductions in the general fund by the end of the year, which is direction you can give, but the timing of that would, we would need that direction tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Where would I find in the budget document a list of all those funds, such as the one you were just speaking about?
So this is, these are all general fund that we're talking about. The fund balance is in the budget discussion area, which is the yellow tab on the side. So there is a fund balance section in there, and I don't have the page number off the top of my head, but it is in there.
I've got it. And I guess I need to look at this more closely, but can you tell me, are all of these funds outlined in this document, or is it just consolidated into the general fund? In other words, I'm really curious to know what are all the different funds are, just for education, my own education at this point.
So just from a terminology standpoint, we typically distinguish funds as the difference between the general fund, for instance, the General Capital Fund, Transportation Impact Fee Fund. Those are different sort of buckets to draw from, but there's also fund balance, which each fund individually has. So we have been focused primarily on the general fund at this point, and then the fund balances are included in the budget. They are estimates, given the timing of budget preparation, but the balances at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is the end of last fiscal year, are in the CAFRA. So there is a section in the CAFRA which has the general fund fund balance and all of the categories, including assigned and committed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dan, and maybe you guys can all correct me, but the agenda I'm looking at tonight says H, study session, H1, variety direction on capital improvement plan projects and funding proposals, staff report. I don't have this down on the agenda that I have as a regular session. Does anyone else have that differently? This is a study session this evening.
This is agenda item I2. I reordered it.
All right. I haven't, this is what I downloaded from the website today. So I just would say that to you all. This was like the link that came from the website when I clicked on the website link. So.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little telephonic issue here, but the CIP item, which will come after this, is a study session. This is the, the budget issue is a direction and action item. And we're on the budget item, not the CIP.
So I'm totally confused, because when I go to the city website and I click on agenda, the agenda I get does not indicate that. I just want to lay that out for all of you. When I click on the agenda item on the city website, I'm not looking, I think, at the same thing you guys are on.
Well, when I look at it, I see that this, we have the presentation, and then H1 is the capital improvement plan, and that's a study session, but that has been moved to later in the agenda. Mayor Taylor, reorder.
We can go ahead and go forward. My I2 says, that's fine. Let's go ahead and just, let's go ahead and continue.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
I have I2 as regular business, but I did want to clarify that it says that we're approving a strategy, we're not approving the actual budget. So does that mean that we're giving, approving a strategy is, is the regular business way of giving direction, kind of? Because there's still a lot of moving parts, and moving parts in a budget is the budget. So as we, as we give strategy and give direction on that, are you, when are you bringing it back to us for us to review?
So this is actually.
The last time we're going to see this.
So this actually speaks to the two distinct pieces that we are requesting direction from council on tonight. So the first piece is the current year's fiscal budget and making, or the current fiscal year's budget and making amendments to that budget. So this is the previously adopted one that needs to be updated, given the current situations. And the strategy direction is for next year's budget, for the 202021 budget, which is slated for adoption on June 23rd. So certainly not the last time you would see it.
It has to be done by the end of June, yeah?
Correct, yes.
So that makes me a little nervous. If we don't get it to the end of June, that doesn't give us any wiggle room if we do what we do sometimes and say, oh, no, you misunderstood, we'd like to have it tweaked this way or that. Is there any way to bring it back sooner? I know you, I know you have nothing else to do, but is it possible for you to bring it back sooner so that if, if there is direction on things that would be preferred, we have the time to do that while meeting the deadline?
Absolutely. So you will always, at the very least, get two opportunities to see it, both with the proposed budget, the public hearing, and the actual adoption. We do plan to bring it back before that. In previous fiscal years, we've had it come back several times as an executive summary of the major changes, and then the proposed budget being published while ahead of time. This year has been a slightly different process, but we absolutely do intend to give you as much time to consider the city manager's proposed budget as possible. However, I will like, I would like to reiterate that getting that direction on strategy tonight will help us do that.
No, I understand. I understand. So it would be hopefully approved on the 23rd. So will we see it basically every council meeting until we're done? Or I'm just wondering how the process is, since this is so different? And, and, and it is something that requires very serious review.
It is. So I don't know that necessarily every council meeting, unless the council gave direction to bring back pieces of it, simply from the sequencing standpoint of how we put together the budget. We could probably make that happen. We, I can guarantee that we can't have a full budget by the next council meeting, but we can certainly work on the components of it. And again, do, do intend to give you as much time to consider the budget and the community to consider the budget as possible ahead of actually putting, having the public hearing and adoption meetings.
I understand. Now, as I, as I remember, we have a set amount that we usually have for our reserves. Isn't it 8 million?
The reserves, they vary by category, and it's set out in the city council reserve policy of targeted percentages of general fund expenditures. So economic stabilization, for instance, just off the top of my head, I believe, is 20 to 25% of general fund expenditures. So between all of those categories, I actually don't have the number off the top of my head because we are drawing down one of the reserve funds, but I believe it's 14 million in economic stabilization and 10.3 million in emergency contingency, and something on the order of 2.8 in strategic pension reserve. But I don't know that one off the top of my head. Again, that one is a changing number.
Okay. Because I like to get a feel of how much we're cutting into it. So I, as I remember, we do have more reserve than we necessarily have to have. So again, making up numbers, we can say, we have to have 10, we have 14, or, you know, our usual target is 10, we have 14, we use 12. Or, you know, what percentage down are you proposing that we use? Because my concern is, my worst fear is, this isn't going to pop back this summer, and this is a little bit of an indication of things to come. So I think we're all feeling a little timid on how we spend and how we dip into those reserves. So if, if we really don't want to go below what the set amount is, how close to that bar are we getting?
So city council.
The amount is set by council, but it is, it is at least a bar.
So I actually, I am remiss and did not calculate what the lower end of that threshold is, though it is somewhat dependent on what the city council directs for the operating budget, given that this, the requested strategy would drastically reduce the operating budget, that would also lower the bar. But to your point, I think that we recognize that there are so many uncertainties in the future that fully depleting the economic reserve, or the economic stabilization reserve would be potentially imprudent, and therefore, we're not making that recommendation. And all of the recommended amendments tonight and requested budget strategy would reduce it to somewhere, it would be above 50% of the current level, I believe.
Okay, great. I see Councilmember Mueller has his hand up, so I'll, I'll be quiet and let him ask some questions.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, Dan, I remember at some point in the past that there was a discussion about rolling debt over to the next year and making it up in the next year's budget. Is that an option in this case, if we decided in closing out this year's budget that we wanted to instead recoup that, that deficit in the new year?
I am afraid I don't recall that conversation exactly.
Well, I'm not sure you were here at the time. It was a few years back, but is it possible that debt, that debt can roll from one year's budget into the next year's budget to be recouped for a mechanism in that year's budget?
I might have to defer to Nick or Starla on this one. I'm not aware of a mechanism that would allow a crossover of budget years, having an imbalanced budget in one fiscal year.
So you can't have a deficit budget one year that's made up in the next year?
You could certainly draw from reserves in one year and replenish the reserves in the next year.
And yet, we've kind of done that by pushing out the TOT till the end of September.
The TOT will still be recognized in the current fiscal year, so all of our planned projections, we'll, we'll record it as a receivable for the first few months of the year, as we understand what operators are remitting.
So that's fair. So if we said we wanted, we would draw from the reserve this year, but we are going to make it up in the next year's budget, that's something that we could do?
That is certainly feasible. It would, as we'll get into the requested strategy for next year, it would require adjustments in the level of recommended amounts, though. It is, certainly that mechanism exists.
Okay. And just as my colleagues can tell, I'm struggling with that it could go up to 3 million dollars to draw from reserves for two and a half month time period. So, but, but that being said, it's, I don't want to dominate with questions around that.
Councilmember Mueller, I appreciate your questions. And I have a one, Mr. Jacobson, and thank you for the presentation. On the Table 1 chart, there's a list of revenue that says other. What is the other?
This is a variety of categories. It is everything from donations to the city, to intergovernmental revenue, to interest earnings off of the city's reserve balances. So these are smaller individual categories. We didn't break them out for purposes of making a table that is reasonably readable. We do have those amounts, if you're interested in seeing them individually. I don't have them available right this moment, but we can certainly provide that to the council in the future.
That would be great. So is, so is it itemized in our budget, in the adopted budget?
Yes, yes. Each of those will, all of those categories are in there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nash? Councilmember Nash, do you still have a question?
No, I do not. I'll hold it. Thank you.
Okay. So if we're done with questions for that section, then we'll move on to the next discreet item that we are asking for city council's direction on, which is fiscal year 202021, kind of a mouthful. I apologize ahead of time if I say it incorrectly. So similar to earlier, want to do a very brief overview of the budget before we dive into the details. We have mentioned this a couple of times, but just to be very clear for the public, the budget for the fiscal year must be adopted before the fiscal year starts. So it is by June 30th or before July 1st. The economic impacts of COVID-19 are expected to be substantial and continuing into the following fiscal year. So we'll present those numbers in comparison to the baseline budget, and the baseline budget for purposes of tonight's discussion is the 201920 adopted budget. So these impacts are currently estimated to be a 12.69 million dollar revenue shortfall across several categories across the entire fiscal year, that is July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, up to 10.67 million in expenditure reductions, both in personnel and non-personnel. And that would still leave a 3.77 million dollar requirement for other resources, and we'll talk briefly about what those are, but the use of reserves is one category, and capital funding monies would be another category. So the primary request of staff this evening is receiving direction on the strategy as the proposed budget is developed for your consideration in coming council meetings. So looking, starting with revenues, similar to the current fiscal year that we looked at, this is Table 7 in the staff report. It outlines several scenarios. Those range from pessimistic to most likely to optimistic, and it compares the estimated difference between the adopted 201920 budget and the forecasted full 202021 fiscal year. So the very top line property taxes shows a range from 294,000 dollars below the current year's adopted numbers to an increase of 294,000. So this is primarily the result of timing. There is an anticipated impact. So this is primarily the result of timing. There is an anticipated impact in future fiscal years to property taxes, but 2020-21 is less likely to see substantial impacts. However, moving down the list here, similar to 2019-20, TOT is the single largest category. And again, a reflection of that being driven by business and leisure travel. While it is essentially nothing during the stay at home order, it is unlikely to bounce back immediately following the easing of restrictions. And so the pessimistic view here is that it would start out at 10%, whereas the optimistic is it would be as high as 40%, which in either case is a very substantial reduction to one of the city's primary revenue sources. So moving further down the list, sales taxes, licenses and permits, charges for services and other categories are all expected to have some revenue reduction in the most likely and pessimistic outcomes, and those are outlined in the chart here. And the most likely, okay. So in total, the, the most likely outcome, which is really what we're trying to center around is a $12.69 million reduction compared to the baseline budget. So charges for services, so this table outlines a category which includes a number of different services. This was included in table seven in the staff report, but in order to make a somewhat more tidy, single chart, it didn't work out well. So we broke this one out. This is a separate slide. So these include things like planning fees, fees charged for gymnastics programs, childcare rentals and a variety of others. So I would like to point out that here, as well as looking at the previous categories, the differences and potential outcomes are not uniform. So looking at planning fees in particular, the optimistic outcome is that there's no loss compared to the baseline. There is no revenue loss in planning in the optimistic outcome. But the contrasting case would be events and concerts, which has essentially full revenue loss in every scenario due to the congregant discretionary nature of those services. Moving on to personnel estimates, so this is the expenditure side. This is shown as table eight in the staff report. So these are wage and retirement costs by group, ranging from the city council to unrepresented management and several represented bargaining units. So this does not represent all personnel costs. So if you're comparing all personnel costs in the adopted budget to this number, they will be somewhat different. The reason is these are identified as some of the most flexible categories. And in total, the general fund baseline for these is 33 and a half million and staff is recommending a $4.57 million reduction from that total. It is also important to note that some of these reductions can be identified in a very straightforward manner, but will require some combination of negotiation or layoffs in order to achieve the total recommended reduction. The other category of expenditures is non-personnel. The baseline non-personnel operating budgets by department are shown here, which are also table nine of the staff report. So there are a number of subcategories in this, as mentioned earlier, going back to the utilities, repairs and maintenance comment, but the table in the staff report is too wide to be plainly visible here. So that's why it's the sum total of these categories by department. So in total, the, in the general fund, this is 22.64 million is it for the baseline. The recommended strategy direction from staff is to identify $4.1 million in reductions and an additional $2 million in potential reductions. So both of those, if combined, would result in a non-personnel total of 16.54 million. And so one thing that, as I mentioned before, there are a couple additional levers available to city council. Those are not shown here. They are their use of reserves or the use of capital funds. The amount necessary really depends on the direction that staff receives tonight. So they could either decrease due to a larger magnitude reduction in personnel or non-personnel expenditures, or increase if the outlined reductions were lower. And so I know it's a convoluted thing to say, but these, the, on the expenditure side or use of other resources, they really do work in concert and do have an effect on each other. So they're not fully independent. So we, we recognize that this is a huge amount of information and in an effort to help compile it all, we put together one last table comparing the estimated impacts and recommended strategy. So shown here are the totals by category for the 2019-20 fiscal year, the 2020-21 fiscal year and the sum across those years. Also shown in the far right column is the percentage of revenue shortfall in that each category represents. So this is a similar representation to the pie chart from before, but for two years. So the total estimated shortfall is 20.7 million across both years and the recommended strategy offsets that by use of $6.8 million in personnel changes, 9.5 million in operations changes and 6.1 million in use of reserves or capital monies. These are somewhat uneven in the table. That is the percentages that are not equal between those categories. But the recommendation does include 2 million in potential reductions for non-personnel expenditures, which would change the lowest two percentages if adjusted. They would basically swap places. So again, in recognition of the substantial amount of information presented tonight, staff would like to reiterate the requested direction from city council tonight. The first category is amending the 2019-20 budget. That is salary savings beyond the budgeted vacancy factor, unspent non-personnel funds due to suspension of operations and the use of economic stabilization reserve in order to balance the budget and potentially offer small business relief through the San Mateo County Strong Fund if council desires, and that is an amount that is entirely directed. That council has full discretion over all of the reserve funds, and that would include the use of the San Mateo County Strong contribution. So the second requested direction is the fiscal year 2020-21 budget strategy. So this includes revenue estimates, which include a substantial shortfall, personnel savings through negotiations or layoffs, non-personnel reductions in the general fund, and finally, the use of economic stabilization reserve or capital funds. And at this time, we do thank you for your consideration for sitting through a very dense number filled presentation, and we would be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, for the presentation. Are there any follow-up questions before we go to public comment? Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We did receive one public comment via the web form. That was from Pamela Jones, and I do see her on our calls as well. So I'll ask her in a moment to see if she'd like to provide a live public comment. I prefer me to read her public comment. At this time, for the members of the public who have joined us, if you wish to speak on this item, please use the hand feature. It is in your toolbar to the right of your name. If you raise your hand, I'll be able to open up your mic. And you'll have your three minutes for public comment on this item. Again, this item is item I two, which is review projected revenue shortfalls resulting from COVID-19 emergency adopt resolution 6556, amending the city council adopted fiscal year 1920 general fund budget and approve the budget strategy for fiscal year 2020, 2021. So at this time, I'm going to unmute Pamela Jones. Ms. Jones, would you prefer to give your public comment live or would you like me to read it? I don't believe she has a mic capability. I'm going to go ahead and display and read her public comment. Just give me one moment to become. Okay, so this is again coming from Pamela Jones, Menlo Park resident. Hello, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, councilmembers Nash, Mueller, Carlton and staff. This is an unprecedented and difficult time. So on many levels, I appreciate your work to address the 2020, 2021 budget challenges. As you work through the cuts that may be required, please do so from a lens of our guiding principles and a commitment to retaining, retraining long time employees. It is also important to include funding for the redistricting process, which will need which will need to begin following the release of the 2020 census data in March 2021. As you are all aware, I support the establishment of an independent redistricting commission in which the cost is about the same as our previous advisory districting committee in $2,018. How we approach redistricting is later discussion. What is important? Would that funding be included in the 2021, 20, 2020, 2021 budget? Thank you for your commitment to the residents of Menlo Park. Respectfully, Pamela D. Jones, resident. Right, and continuing at this time. The first public speaker I have with a hand raised is Fran Dean. Fran, I've unmuted your mic. If you would like to unmute your end, you can address the city council.
Okay, am I on now?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and quite frankly, personally, because our small businesses need our support and they need a vote of confidence right now. So this comment really bridges the presentation that was made earlier. However, it, it is brought up again in I two, which you're looking at right now. So we encourage council to support the suggested allocation of $70,000 to San Mateo County Strong, which is earmarked, which of course, as we allocate that money, hopefully, it would be earmarked for grants specifically to Menlo Park small businesses. As indicated in the earlier presentation by Roseanne Faust, Sam Seda, the need for small business financial assistance is significant and it can't be covered by the existing funds available at San Mateo Strong. We agree with the San Mateo methods, the Sam Seda method of allocation by population. It, it's a very good way of looking at all of our counties or cities within the county. And the measure K dollars allocated, great use of measure K. But they hardly touch the surface to address the need of the small businesses for their survival. As Roseanne indicated, only five, if we go up from the 4.2 indicated, only five small businesses will receive grants out of a known 42 applications. And each grant is a maximum of 10K each, which hardly covers the cost of payroll and operation expenditures. And again, those were 42 applications that come in within that period of time. The portal was open. Doesn't say that's all our small business needs. Small business guests have been eligible for other federal programs such as PPP or IDOL loans that we know of under care, but those federal funds have expended and the application portals closed. Nationwide, small businesses need our support and you have the ability to help and allocate dollars specifically for Menlo Park businesses. We need to support them in any way possible. And I encourage you to follow the example already established by some of our neighboring communities in augmenting the funds in San Mateo Strong, specifically earmarking them for Menlo Park businesses. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fran. At this time, our next public comment is coming from Karen Crowe. Karen, I've unmuted your mic.
Great. I see that it's unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am a member of Menlo Together and I'm speaking on behalf of Menlo Together and as well as myself. And I want to say, you know, thank you for all this really tough analysis with lots of uncertainties. There's a lot of detail here and we just want to speak to the, the values of equity and reducing disparities as we manage through this crisis. And to that end, we'd like just to inject into the process a lot of, you know, please think a lot about who are the most vulnerable and the most deeply impacted residents and/or business owners in Menlo Park as you make decisions. There are going to be some very difficult trade-offs, but I hope that we can center those with the greatest need. As well as, and this is more of a CIP thing, but when certain projects are, you know, sort of emergency things and a pound of prevention is worth, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. That would be another guiding principle. And then to get a little bit more specific, anything we can do to keep individuals housed is an ounce of prevention and also affects and supports the most vulnerable. We heard from Dana Chung about in-home childcare businesses, which are generally single women, women, low income women and women of color who run those businesses and also cater to parents in similarly at risk or marginalized populations. So that I hope is a very, very big priority. And then in terms of continuing work, the climate at this crisis, as we know from news reports and such as, is desperately affecting communities of color and, and low income people and people with other disadvantages already and from our system, not from who they are. Sorry, that sounded kind of bad. And climate will have the same effect. So anything, any really meaningful action we can take in the next year or however many years that we're making difficult decisions is going to be an equity action. Just like this crisis, the pandemic is affecting communities of color harder, it will, so will climate. So I hope that we continue with our climate action plan. And I want to say thank you to staff for proposing that upper management take higher pay cuts than lower level staff. That is great leadership and we really appreciate that. And then finally, the emergency reserve fund, absolutely support using that. I mean, this is a global pandemic. It's extremely a disaster and an emergency and an unusual situation and exactly what that fund is meant for. So I fully support using it as much as we are, if not a little more. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, Mayor Taylor, looking again to see if there's anyone else. Do have a second hand raised or a third hand, my apologies. Josie Gayard. I have unmuted your mic. Did you have a public comment? Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Hi, Josie Gayard. I'm a resident and small business owner in Menlo Park. I'm really appreciating the, the, all the thought both by staff and city council that's going into the discussion about the budget. Lots of detailed information, which I appreciate. I just want to express support for using the stabilization fund. It seems to me that what's happened within the last two months is sort of a once in a century economic event for this country. You know, similar to the Great Depression of about 100 years ago. So I think if there's any time in which those funds could be used, could, you could justify use of those funds. It seems that now would be a good time. And I also just want to express support for the idea that government actually can provide a stabilizing force for the economy right now. Menlo Park is extremely fortunate and the prudent choices of leaders, you know, in the past decades have created this, this cushion, economic cushion for the city. So I feel like if there's a time to, to actually be open to using it, I would say this is, this is the time. That's it.
Thank you, Josie. Just double checking, Mayor Taylor. We do have one more hand up. This is Heather Hopkins. Heather, I've unmuted your mic. You were able to share your public comment when ready?
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm commenting from Community Equity Collaborative, just to follow up on Dana's previous comment. I just wanted to let you know that San Mateo County Strong Funds for small businesses won't cover most of the childcare centers in our community, only for-profit centers, of which there are only five of, of the total number of childcare programs in Menlo Park. So Community Equity Collaborative reached out to those and tried our darndest to make sure they all apply for the- So Community Equity Collaborative reached out to those and tried our darndest to make sure they all apply for the fund. That said, probably most won't be funded, just like other small businesses. The other childcare providers are in-home providers and nonprofit centers who both don't really have any funding going toward them right now. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, final question. On the hands raised, I see no hands raised. Have no typed in comments. Mayor Taylor, continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for all the public comment. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I wanted to share a story with my colleagues because I don't, and I want to make clear, it's not that I oppose using the Economic Stabilization Fund, but I think background is sort of important in understanding why I want to be conservative in using the Economic Stabilization Fund. And it comes from a place of personal experience. When I was a kid, my family had money for when I was very young. When I was in about third grade, my dad developed a disability and could no longer work. And we had to live on what we had saved in insurance money for my entire life until that I made it to high school and went to college. And there was, it was a large family. And so that lesson taught me when I was young that when times are hard and when you have a limited amount of reserves in the bank account, you use it judiciously. And so, well, I'm not, I want to make clear to folks, I'm not opposed to using the Economic Stability Fund. But my point is that that fund needs to last. And what I am concerned about is using that fund in a fashion where we pay for services or we pay for things that we're not providing. Because it's going to be a long time before we're actually able to build that fund up again. I expect that we'll be drawing from that fund for years to come to balance our budgets, to provide the necessary services to make the city work. And so when I'm talking to folks about what is the appropriate amount to draw from that fund, it's not that I don't think we should draw from it. It's the amount that we draw from it and how long we prepare for it so that we're able to draw from it from a sustained period of time to deliver necessary services to residents, to keep the city moving and protect the vulnerable over a long period of time. So I just wanted to make that comment to my colleagues as we go forward. As I'm sitting here thinking tonight, what I'm looking at is, you know, over a very short period of time, looking at drawing down $7 million from a fund that would, you know, from that fund balance. And we have, this is a marathon. We have a ways to go through this crisis. This isn't going to be over in a year and a half in terms of our economic recovery. And there's a lot of people in this city who are going to be candidly, probably in worse straits nine months from now than they are today. I don't think the situation is going to be better. I think it's going to be a challenge and I think we need to prepare for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I appreciate you providing that background. And I definitely appreciate what the previous councils have done that has basically put Menlo Park in a position that we're in, where we have choices. And the most important thing is that we make informed choices, especially when it comes to our fiduciary responsibilities. Did anyone else on the council have follow-up? Because I am in need of a break. I want to take about five minutes. All right. Thank you. And I believe, Ms. Heron, we're supposed to all turn our cameras off.
Yes, please. You can turn your cameras off and mute your microphones. Hello, Mayor Taylor, City Council members. Everyone has returned. So when you're ready to reconvene, Mayor, you can continue.
Okay, and we are reconvened. And we took a break on I-2, review projected revenue shortfalls. Mr. Jacobson or Ms. Heron, can you put up the screen that talks about what the council's role is in this item for tonight?
It'll be up just momentarily.
Okay. And I had a question for, a couple of questions for Mr. Jacobson. Hi, Mr. Jacobson. Thank you again for the presentation. And I just, I know that you offered some clarity on, I think it was table. Just looking at table two, there's a few tables that just, it has other. Table two has other $5,818,000 and then other revenues, 3.8, I'm sorry, 5.8 million. And then other revenues, 3.7 million. What are those funds?
So these are those categories such as donations, use of money. So the interest earned on the investments that the city has, intergovernmental, each of these falls into that other category, as well as some fines and forfeitures.
And with that, is that true for each item that says other on the different tables? I think the last table has an other and that one is, I think around, I think one amount is 400,000, the other amount is 800,000.
So those should only be the case.
It was seven. I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Those should be the case in the revenue tables. There is another revenue category, just based on the way that those were represented. So it will only show up in the categories that are discussing revenue. And then those are those other categories, given that they are relatively small compared to some of the other sources and typically not as, they don't have as high of exposure to COVID-19 effects.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Jacobson or did we want to just go through the requested direction of staff and offer our input? No one has any input or questions by Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I don't have any additional questions for Mr. Jacobson. I'm happy to sort of provide input or direction at a very high level. I am certainly comfortable with the approach for amending the 2019-2020 budget and the usage of reserve funds that come with that amendment. For the 2020-2021 budget, I think my direction would be to look at more ways we can get to a zero-balance budget as much as possible. Because I see the reserves as therefore scenarios in which you are surprised, right? And so, yeah, and so for this amended 2019-2020 budget, we were surprised, right? There's no way we could have baked that in to our understanding. But as we look beyond that, and so that's why I'm willing to support what SAKA has recommended in using the reserve funds. But when we look beyond that, then what we're dealing with is not a surprise. But when we look beyond that, then what we're dealing with is not a surprise. But what we're dealing with is a reality that is, is really challenging. But, but at that point, what I, I want to do is, is an approach that really looks at, you know, the, the somewhat shrunken, you know, abilities that the city will have as a result of less funds. And I think going back into our having a budget strategy that relies on another three or four million of reserves funds suggests to me that we really haven't gotten or taken it to heart that we're dealing with a really different situation and for the long term, and what we need to do is really focus on, on, on getting our, our costs to a level that matches that, that, that much diminished revenue. And so again, that's, again, that's a broad sort of thirty thousand foot approach. I know that there is, there's lots of challenges in the detail and, 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 and I, again, very much appreciate the, the staff's effort and all the work that I know has, has already been put in this. And, and, and I know that there are even in what is being proposed, some really, really difficult decisions. And what I'm suggesting would require even more difficult, incredibly difficult decisions. But, but I really do need, think we need to, as soon as possible, get into a position where we are really recognizing that the city's resources are going to be, are going to be limited.
Councilmember Carlton?
I agree. As I said previously, I don't think this is a short-term blip. I think this is going to, sadly, I'm afraid it might get worse before it gets better. And I agree with you that, that we need to pull into the reserves this year because we were taken by surprise. And we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions next year. And we might have to get creative, and we might have to partner with, with different groups on, on how we can get more effective on how we provide services. Saying that, I also firmly believe, I think one of the speakers said, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And what we don't want is a lot of homeless people, as a lot of people losing their homes in Menlo Park. As, as much as possible, they need strong leadership from us on many levels. And that is going to include doing what we can to support our small businesses. And whether that's putting forward fun, creative things, you know, to, to try and get people to buy locally, even if it's online, you know, Christmas in July events and things online for, for that. Or if it is actually donating to the San Mateo Strong to get the money out to them, at least in the short term. And the thing that breaks my heart is we might lose some businesses. But I'd like to do everything we can to support that because I, I saw it and I, I wish I'd actually brought it to, to reference more directly in the city council meeting. I saw something where one pizza place in New York City goes, goes out of business. And it's not just the people that work there, it's the people that supply the things, it's the people that deliver the pizza. It, it goes on and on and on and on and on to, to the nth degree of things that you wouldn't even think about. And so it's not just, oh, we really like store X or store Y or all our, our stores, or not even our stores. Our people that live in Menlo Park that provide services that hire a lot of people. We, we, we need them to survive, not only because it, we always talk about better community and, and, and quality of life in downtown Menlo Park, but by, by keeping those stores floating, hopefully through this, so that they can continue long-term, we keep people from losing their homes. We keep people being able to provide for their family. And so we'll talk about it in the next thing when we talk about the CIP. But there are a lot of things that are nice to have that we can pull money out of. Downtown Street is great, three hundred thousand dollars, hydration station, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We can go through this and we can find the money to provide more than seventy thousand dollars to, to really signal to, not just signal, to really honestly support our small businesses and our people in Menlo Park. Because I think that it's not just for that business, there's a knock-on effect that's really going to help support Menlo Park people.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller? You can't hear me. Member Mueller, your mic is off.
Oh, my goodness, I apologize. I said, when I look at this, I appreciate all the work that went into it. And I'm, and I, if, you know, if I am, was passionate about talking about the reserves. I think with the thing that I'm, the thing that I'm struggling with right now to understand is, so if this, if this was my checkbook at home and I was going to be drawing out of my bank account, and if I was going to be drawing out of my long-term savings, and I was like, okay, what am I doing that for? Right? Like, what am I drawing out of my kid's college fund for? Or what am I drawing out of tomorrow for? And that's the thing, Dan, that when I look at this, if I'm going to be going into like, into those reserve funds, or I need to like, I, and if I'm going to look at my neighbor in the eye and say, okay, we made the decision this year, we really went for it. And so I understand what services I needed to protect. What was it I was protecting? Because I'm basically taking tomorrow and saying, I'm not going to protect, that I'm going to take a risk that I'm not going to be able to protect that tomorrow by protecting that today. So I need to understand that. So, and I, and I, and there's this, this does, the report does a really good job of giving me like, the spreadsheets of the different departments. But it doesn't really tell me like, where the rubber meets the road in that, right? Like, if I, if I don't do the four million on this, what's going to, what's not going to be there tomorrow and for who? And if it's, and that's kind of like, at this point in this stage, we are, and I know staff, you guys have done an incredible job of explaining to us, we really are going to be in a position where we are rethinking Menlo Park government for the short term, right? We are, we just, we are. And so understanding the nuts and bolts of the policy of where that's going to meet the road and what that means is going to help, help us, help make the decision of, okay, it's appropriate for this amount of money. And so I'm sharing my bias with you that I, whoa, that's a lot of reserve because I think it's going to be a number of years. But it's going to be easier for me to do that if I understand the nuts and bolts of what that means. And I don't, I don't necessarily get this from that, this report. And I'm not comfortable going that deep on it because I just think it's going to be a long time. And I'm worried that we will, we're, we're going to make it difficult to make some decisions later on continuing to deliver services to folks who may need them. So I don't know if that's helpful at all. If I were you, I'd probably be looking at me going, thanks, right? Like, but I'm being very candid with you about, about where I am on that. So I need, I need some more information about the, what those reserves go to and what they're prepared, what their why. And my inclination right now is I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with it. So I need to, like, the case is going to need to be made to me. So I hope that's helpful.
So if I may, can I just clarify that, which fiscal year you're talking about?
Well, so it compounded, right? So then in the night, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, when it's, when I saw, I mean, I knew we were going to have to go into reserves this year. But when I saw it could go up as high as three, I was like, oh, man, I'm comfortable. And then when I look in the report, and it's like, before the next, I'm like, man, that's seven million, just boom off the top, like that is. So for me, candidly, to be honest, it's like half dozen one, half dozen the other, which year? For me, it's like, what's the, what's the total net effect? Because what I'm concerned about is what happens in the next year. And so, and so that like the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, in a way, it's spent money, right? Like, I don't really know how to get away from that. In a way, it's already spent money. Like, I, I don't know how we make up for that except through CIP, but there's only so much CIP you can cut, right? Because you have, we can't defer maintenance forever and the number, and we're supposed to deliver services to the CIP. So some of those things, so there are projects that we can look at that we're like, well, that's a good-to-have project. You know, it's a nice-to-have that can go away. But after a while, like, you get to the point where, okay, we've cut all the nice-to-have. These are, these are maintaining city services, maintaining service, city infrastructure. So, so, you know, if you want to assume that we have to do the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget, then you're probably going to have to make a bigger argument for me in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one. In the two thousand nineteen, twenty, if you can come to me and say, okay, well, we can look more in terms of CIP, what we, what we do to get there. And that probably gives us a little bit more in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget for me. It's just the cumulative effect that I'm like, that's making me nervous. Because I think, I do, I think this is going to be a long time before we start filling those reserves again. So, and I think it's going to be a long time before you can give me a, give me a, a pathway that you believe in, that we're going to fill those reserves again. So unless, unless we do something crazy, like a, like some sort of crazy taxes, which people in business probably wouldn't be happy with. So, anyway, thank you.
So Mayor Taylor, can I, can I just summarize that? As I hear Councilmember Mueller's comments, then he's essentially agreeing with Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Carlton that the use of the reserves for nineteen twenty, where there's sort of a surprise at the end of the year, is, is under, somewhat understandable, but you want to see uses other than the reserve in twenty twenty-one.
I, I'd like to see why we're using the reserves in twenty twenty-one. And the case made, and I think my colleagues, both Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Carlton's, had the luxury of speaking after them, but knowing them, I think, like, if you can make the case that something essential is going to be cut, they're going to be open to that. But we need to, like, I need to understand that. I don't, just by looking at the report, I don't understand that yet. So.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you for clarifying, Councilmember Mueller. You had a follow-up?
Yeah, I just want to say, look, I don't want to diminish the fact, and I, and I, that this is a tough budget that you guys gave us. It's a tough budget, like it is, it's a tough budget. Like, I'm not diminishing that fact at all. So, you know, I'm, I don't mean to diminish that, that fact at all. It's a tough circumstance, it's a tough budget, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
I agree with everything that has been said and that I'm comfortable with the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty as having been caught off guard, where no one could have seen, foreseen that. But I do think we should take a good look at what other alternatives we have in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And such as the funds that Dan was talking about before, and what other funds there are, and just everything that, what are all the different options that we have? And in addition, we need to look at the services and what makes sense in this new environment and what, what do we really, what are the city values and what should we, what can we and what should we be offering? And put all of that together into a new budget strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Jacobson or our senior manager, or both. But just listening to the concerns of the council and initially going into this conversation, if I had spoke first, I would have asked to actually pull this item to have further discussion at a later date with some things included in there. For me, just not knowing what the others are, I think it should be in the report so that it's specific because it's quite a bit of money. It's almost, at least from table two, it's over nine million dollars. And it, as it being listed as just other or other revenue, to be more specific, so that when we're thinking about our future year and looking at what services we want to protect, that we have a little bit more information to be able to determine that. There's too many unknowns for me. And I would love to give more money, speaking to the, the amending the budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to put more money in the pot. I believe that the city needs to be investing in itself. We need to take care of ourself and looking at the need, whether it's childcare or a, a restaurant or a place where you can get copies, photocopies. All the businesses in Menlo Park are important, no matter where that they're located and no matter what services that they provide. I'm really concerned about certain industries going away. There's been a lot of talk about, about gardeners and how they're surviving. I'm concerned about people that are not going to be captured by any of the funds that are provided by, whether it's San Mateo Strong or Sam Seda or Silicon Valley. I'm concerned about what Menlo Park is willing to do for its residents and its small businesses. Who, who's vulnerable in our city is what I want to know. And I want to know as a council, what we're willing to do to invest in our own community members. And so that's, that's where my concerns are. Councilmember Nash, I don't know if that was a hand or a wave.
That was a hand for after you're finished. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, oh, it, it's okay. I tend not to talk for long periods of time, so that, to me, that's a signal. At any rate, it's a joke. So I just wanted to share that. I just believe that we need to be investing in our own city, in our own problems. And, excuse me, considering how much money we put aside for Samaritan House, which I'm going to assume that those funds are pretty much gone by now, how much is needed for small businesses? How much is needed to keep the city running? Just all these things are definitely important. And it, for me, it's most important to have as much information as possible so that we're making informed decisions. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I was wondering, Dan, do you know, or can you give us how many small businesses we have in Menlo Park? As far as how many permits, business permits do we have that qualify for the under two point five million dollar threshold? And a small number of employees, I don't recall what the threshold was. We know that forty-two applications were submitted, and I'm wondering if we have any clue what percentage of the business population that would be?
I don't have that at my fingertips. We can check our business license data to find that out. It is not perfectly accurate, but it's very, very accurate. I might defer to John Passman, if he's still available. He may have that information, but I, I don't know whether he has that at his fingertips.
Hi, just jumping in this. Yeah, so that we don't have that information available at our fingertips. That's, as Dan said, that's something we can definitely look into using the business license data.
Do you have any general feel for what percentage that might be?
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable giving you a percentage without taking a better look at, especially with the, the parameters. Are you specifically asking about the parameters of the SMC Strong Business Grant Program, the between two to ten employees and under two point five million in gross receipts?
Yes, I guess what I'm interested in generally is just capturing an idea of what our small business community looks like, both within that category and then perhaps which ones are, would be beyond that, but not at the Facebook. Well, I guess, yes, just how many, how many business permits do we have? And how many would fall into that category? And then how many would be above it? And if you have any other sort of ranges that would make sense, where you see a definition that there's this many in, I don't know, up to five million and then this many, then everybody else. Just sort of how you would cut and slice to give us a feel for what is the business community in Menlo Park at this point? And then also whether, I'd like to know if that includes the childcare or not? So that we separate out the childcare that we, we heard about. Thank you.
One thing that I forgot to mention earlier is, Councilmember Nash asked to have the items reordered so that we can discuss this. so that we can discuss this item first, the budget item, before we went into CIP. And so, just so we can move on to the next item, not sure if City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson wants to help with that process. I can look at the staff report and look at. Thank you, Starla.
Okay, so then I guess I'll just reiterate that the direction from the councils, I understand. It would be helpful if you made a motion, but the direction from the council is that you're authorized in the use of the reserves up to 2.9 million for 1920, but not, but this budget strategy you're endorsing is not to use reserves for 2021.
No. Councilmember Carlton?
This is my best guess. You tell us what the motion is.
I, I was going to say, so, so moved, but go into some detail. Councilmember Mueller, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so the first part is fine. I think we can have consensus on that. The second part is the part that I wouldn't agree with. So the second part is, we reached consensus this evening on the, on the 2019, 2020. With respect to the 2020, 2021, we are asking, we're, we're directing staff to use a strategy where it would be a balanced budget initially, but with options explained of moving in, with, moving into the reserve for specific programs that staff believes would be in peril, that are necessary, that are necessary services to be delivered without, without, without those reserve, without going into the reserve. So.
Yes. And it's, it's always nice, you know, I remember in the, the downturn in 2009, seeing earrings I wanted, and talking to my husband about it, and my husband said, great, you can have them. What are you not going to have to have those earrings? And I thought about it, and I thought, yeah, I don't need the earrings. You know, this is the same thing. This is where the city sits down and says, these are the things that are are optional and yet critical at the same time, which is kind of where we are in the world. So I think it would be nice for us to be able to look at the options of the things that are critical. And by critical, I, I want to define that, and we can go that, more into that with. In the CIP, they had an interesting list, let me find this, hold on, where they talk about how they, they review things. And they talk about things that are mandated by law, of course, we have to, things that are necessary to, to maintain the city so it doesn't fall apart. But also looking at time sensitive for funding, might be something that falls into this area. For example, if we don't get it together for the middle undercrossing, we're going to lose about $7 million, unless we negotiate for a time extension on that. There are a lot of different grants and things that we have available to us, that if we don't act on, we lose that money. And we might look into it and say, you know what? Maybe we're just going to lose that money because it, the cost is too great. And maybe we'll say we're going to dip in to make sure that these happen. But I completely agree with Councilmember Mueller, in that it's nice for us to see this is balanced, and, and this is not, and this is what it would cost. Does that, is that clear, Starla? Or, sorry, Nick just popped up. Is that, is, are we being clear in, in our direction on, on that motion?
I believe so. City Clerk, may I project my screen, just to help visualize what I understand the council's direction to be? Thank you. So I modified the last slide that we had that summarized the comparison between the two years. This first, this middle column here was the original proposal. I think what I'm hearing the council say is that we need to take this $3.8 million, figure out some spread between personnel and non-personnel changes, and bring that, but that budget reduction to you. What that would involve is, we would say, for example, we are recommending that the, that a certain program, or a certain aspect of our services that have been considered baseline, that those be reviewed, under to reach these goals of $8.8 million, and these are wrong numbers, clearly, 8 million or 6.4 million. And then the council can then make a decision to add them back into the budget, acknowledging that there may be, that may create a need to reduce further in other areas, or the council may decide to use reserves. I understand that general direction. You'll note here that the, some of the, of personnel and non-personnel changes are greater than the revenue shortfall, and that was intended, in the sum of, of the three components in the original, that was intentional to provide the council with options as you go through your budget review and deliberations. So fiscal 1920, as, as recommended by staff, and then fiscal year 2021, present a budget that does not require the use of reserves, however the council can then use. It's, can then add programs back into the budget at its discretion.
Councilmember Mueller?
Okay, the only thing I would add to that, Nick, is also to that, for me, the CIP is on the table. So you can look at, you can look at, you can look at one-time savings. There's only going to be so many times that we can do that. But, but there are some projects in there that have waited a long time anyway. So, because I, and then, and that's just, at the end of the day, if it comes down to doing a CIP project that is, the council said, isn't an agreement on any, or just, it's not going to happen anyway, and it's going to come down to that, or service, I would hate that we didn't have that CIP project on the table to discuss in that analysis.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
I would also like to include some money to Samsita with our, with our proposal, with our motion. So I would, I would propose at this point that we go with the $70,000 that has been proposed by staff with the idea that we can increase that when we have more certainty about next year's budget. But I think that we should put some money in. And I'm interested in hearing what other council members are, what number they're thinking of.
Councilmember Carlton?
I mean, the, the, kind of the advantage of going through the CIP first is, is we can pull some things out, and, and we will after this. But I, I can pull things out of the CIP right now, if everyone agrees. I am, I am, I, I don't have words to express to you how worried I am about the economics of this, about the impact on people's lives. This is what keeps me up at night, and I don't mean to belittle the fact that, that we're dealing with a crisis of people dying, but I don't want people to wish they were dead. This is really serious impacting people's lives, and, and I take this very seriously in terms of doing everything we can to help our businesses stay businesses. Because, as I said before, the knock-on effect is so terrible. So I, I would actually be happy to do 100,000, and with a view to coming back and, and maybe finding more things to pull out of the CIP. Because frankly, keeping our, our people employed and our businesses going is so much more important than whether or not we provide new play structures in a park, all their respective parks.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I'd be supportive of, of Councilmember Nash's original suggestion of, of $70,000, and then sort of adjusting, but committing now to $70,000, and I could also be supportive of committing now to 100,000. But overall, I, I, I support the idea of, of committing some money. If it's, if it's at the minimum level suggested by, by the staff, then that's fine. But again, like, I am supportive of, of the idea of contributing to the fund.
Councilmember Mueller?
I, I have trouble going above the 70 tonight, until we've actually gone through the budget process. I think it's, I think it's, as a staff member and a member of a public, to hear us lamenting over, I mean, really struggling with the deficit spending, and then to, and then to immediately begin to step into deficit spend against a, a professional staff recommendation, I just don't think. And I could understand why we would, we would, you would make that argument, but I just don't think it's the right, right, right thing to do yet. So.
Councilmember Carlton?
There's an old phrase, spend a penny to save a pound. I think that this is investing in our future. I, I'm not going to vote against it if it's 70, but I think it's, I think we're investing in money that's going to save us money in the long run.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think that the thing that, I don't think that precludes from doing more later, Kat. I think the question is, we just don't know if we're saving a penny, or if we're, you know, if we're actually skimming the skin off, off the wound, just, you know. So I think, I think, I like, if, I mean, candidly, if you were to say to me, you wanted to put aside the park repairs, you know, to put an extra, or whatever it was, I'd say, where's the park? Who's it serve, and how bad is the equipment? Right? Like, I just, I'm, I'm comfortable with going on the staff recommendation, and then through the fuzzy process revisiting it, and maybe we kick it up, you know, more than 30 grand, but right now, it seems like adding just 30 grand to it's kind of, you know, I, I appreciate what you, I appreciate what you're trying to do. I think it's, I think it's a really wonderful thing. I, I just would be more comfortable if we just waited and got a pretty clear picture of what we're going to be looking at. And maybe, maybe after we go through the CIP tonight, we're like, okay, yeah. But I think we got, you know, basically, we're trying to make up 4 million right now on a budget. So we, we might find, we might find we get there quick, or we might find, wow, it's going to be quite, quite, quite a, quite a task. And if it gets down to it being quite a task, 30, you know, 30 grands could be a part-time worker or something like that, right? So. Here.
I'll, I'll accept that, I'll accept it all as a friendly amendment, you know, so moved. I'll accept the 70,000. I, I do have to express how deeply, impassionately I feel that we need to do everything possible to help save our businesses and our jobs, and not only for the livelihood of the people directly involved, but indirectly involved. So I'll completely accept it all with, with the intention, and we'll talk about the park stuff next. With, with 70, 70,000, I'm fine, but with the idea that we will come back, if we can, if, if we find the money, if it's appropriate, and revisit the conversation, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I, I know it's hard conversations, and I know everyone's, a lot of people in need.
Ms. Silver, did you have a follow up?
Yes, in terms of the motion, I just wanted to remind you that there is a resolution adopting a, the budget amendment for 2019, 20, so that would be the appropriate motion with an addition of the Santa Monica Strong, or San Mateo Strong appropriation.
Yes. But, but also in the motion, giving direction, because somehow things get lost sometimes. But giving direction that when this comes back to us, we'd like to see a balanced budget, but with options on things that appear critical to, to staff for us to consider. I can, Kara, can we not have that in the motion as well? I can't hear you.
Yes, of course, and, and that's for the 2021, 2021 portion of the budget, right?
Yes.
Before we second, I want to hear with Councilmember Mueller.
So there is another thing that we can talk about in terms of trying to help San Mateo County Strong, and, and that's a discussion actually for us to have as a council. Those of you who've been on the all-elected calls know that there's been a call for electives to do fundraising, and to reach out to the businesses that are still doing well, and ask them if they'd consider fundraising, providing funds. I think that within Menlo Park, we have been somewhat careful about doing that. But I think that it is something for the city to consider, that instead of any one singular council member doing that, that we empower our city manager to reach out to those businesses that are doing well in the city, and say, hey, did you know that San Mateo County Strong is out there? There's this fund there that you can reach out to that, that will be helping businesses in our city. And I can tell you, in other, other cities up and down the peninsula, elected officials are reaching out to the businesses that are prospering during this time period, and asking them to make donations, because it's, it sustains the ecosystem within that city. So I, Councilmember Carlton, yeah, so I'm, I'm totally comfortable with the city doing that. And if we could even say, you know, see, see, we could even make a motion that city do that, and don't tell us what the results of that are. But I'm, if people are worried about it, but candidly, like, there's never been a time our city's been like, in a position like this. I don't, I personally don't think it's, would be something that would cause me to look on one, like, someone's application differently than another. I would just be glad that we got extra money into the, into the fund. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
I agree, and it's probably not the appropriate time to, to get into it too deep, but I just sent an email to Mayor Taylor today that the major fundraiser for Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired had to be canceled. As I'm sure a lot of the fundraisers for a lot of the other nonprofits, Vista is the only group that provides services for the blind and visually impaired. That fundraiser was like half of their, their budget. I don't know how they're going to survive. I don't know how they're going to provide critical services to blind people. And that's just one example of the nonprofits and the hit that they're taking. And, and these aren't, these aren't, these aren't nice to have. These are critical services, and they're not necessarily, they're not going to be getting a lot of the, the grants and, and, and help that for-profit businesses are. And I think that was brought up by one of the speakers earlier, and we're not going to solve that now. But I will be talking to Kara about how we work as a group, or individually, or whatever, to also not only have the strong companies support the San Mateo Strong, but also how we can support our nonprofits providing really critical services to people. Because if our non, if our nonprofits start crumbling, we have a further conversation. But I agree.
Councilmember Nash?
I am very concerned about our nonprofits and our small businesses, and would absolutely support them reaching directly out to our thriving businesses in the city. I am against having the city have any, make any effort either through council or through our city staff to do that. It seems inappropriate to me. It seems that the, that the companies are aware of the situation, and at this point, I am uncomfortable with, with having the city or elected officials get involved.
Maybe the nonprofits, but Mateo Strong, it is appropriate.
As long as we are not the intermediaries, I would absolutely encourage any groups to do that directly without the city or elected officials involved.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I just want to be careful with words about whether or not, whether or not something's Yeah, so I just want to be careful with words about whether or not, whether or not something's appropriate, because actually, under FPPCA guidelines, it's allowable and appropriate, and there's a disclosure in order to do that. So what we can decide is a policy matter of whether or not we want to do that as a city, but it's not inappropriate. It's, you can do it, it's just a question of whether or not the city's, you know, a council wants to, wants to decide that in this circumstance, they're just not going to pursue that. You know, like I said, if my colleagues don't know, I wanted to raise it because I think that in this circumstance, you know, where we are in this, the situation that we are, that if, you know, the council said, okay, understand that, but do the disclosure, or city do the disclosure to let voters know about it so people can be aware about it, and then with that transparency about it, that it would be okay. And that would provide you that layer of protection that is required by the law. But I thought that it's not something, it's something that I knew, I knew the sensitivities around with this council, but I did want to remind everybody that it's not something that would be, be hidden. It would be completely, it would, by law, it's going to be transparent. People are going to know about it, and even more so because I talked about it with you all here. So we can, so with that consideration.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, to some degree, share Councilmember Nash's concern, but I think it's sort of how you look at it. And for me, if it's, if it's the city manager making contact and just saying, hey, that this is something that the city is supporting, and we've contributed to it, and we're, you know, sort of generally encouraging all in the business community that can, that are able to contribute to it also. I'm supportive of that. Now, again, the other side of that is a sort of kind of hard sell, where I do, I can see in that scenario where it would be something that would, would make me uncomfortable, but a general, you know, the city reaching out and through its leadership, if it's the city manager saying that we support this, we've donated it to it, and we're encouraging others to donate it to it, I would be generally supportive of that, that communication. But I have to admit something, I don't know how these things usually work. Is it just that, right? Is it, is it an email? Is it just one phone call? Or is it more like sort of a kind of, you know, strong army, you know, very hard self-fundraising situation? And of course, that's something I wouldn't be supportive of.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, if it were a strong arm, then it would no longer be that, it would be very much, I mean, if it quacks like a duck, it's a duck, so it can't, it can't be a strong arm. So.
I have, I have a request, and I believe this will provide some additional transparency. First and foremost, I do support giving money to Samsita specifically for our small businesses. I also believe that there needs to be additional discussion, dare I say, meeting on revenue. Where does our, where does the money come from, like specifics? Those were a lot of questions that I had that I did not have the opportunity to ask prior to our council meeting, but I figure if it's provided in the document, then we wouldn't need to ask the question because the information is there. And let's see, Councilmember Carlton, so we can move along to our next item and get to that study session. Do you, you have a motion on the floor? Oh, I see a hand from Councilmember Mueller.
So just to wrap that last piece up, is everyone comfortable with just Starla doing a soft hello to people? Still no?
I believe that people are going to give. I'm not sure how much more we need to do individually as council members to encourage people to give, or if we're giving ourselves. I don't know. Councilmember Carlton, you look like you had some input there.
Sorry, I've spent the past 20 years of my life doing fundraising for nonprofits, so if you're not comfortable with Starla doing it for the city, I'm sure that Fran would be happy to do so on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, if that.
Everybody's comfortable with Fran doing it?
If I can volunteer for Fran.
That's fine. So it's why I raised it. I want to make sure we have the discussion.
Legally, it's cool, or normally, it's not us reaching out, it's people calling us and asking, how can I help? And if they do, I have no problem with Starla saying, you can help this way.
I'm comfortable with it going through the chamber. It's fine. If that makes everybody comfortable, comfortable with it going through the chamber. Fran's listening to us talk about it. Happy New Year.
Was there any other follow-up, or can we get a second on Councilmember Carlton's motion? Okay, so we have a first. Yes, Mayor Taylor, I have a first by City Councilmember Carlton, a second by City Councilmember Nash for the motion stated by Kara, and all of the friendly amendments, those will be entered into the minutes by roll call vote. Can I have Councilmember Carlton's vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Nash.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor. Yes. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So the next item on the agenda is the study session. And the study session is to provide direction on capital improvement projects and funding proposals. And I believe Ms. Nagaya will be presenting this item.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Taylor, happy to be here after the budget discussion to follow up on the CIP. So I will project some slides in just a moment. And can you all see the screen? Okay, we're not able to see the screen. Could be experiencing a slight delay. Okay, can, one second. Okay, got it now.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mayor Taylor mentioned, I'm Nikki Nagaya, Public Works Director for the city, and we are here tonight to kind of build on the presentation and study session you had in early March, which provided an overview and status update on the projects in the current capital improvement program. But given the circumstances we just discussed around the budget in the last item, we reviewed the proposed projects in the CIP and made some recommendations on which projects are most important to advance. So before I jump in, I just want to acknowledge that we recognize the importance of all of the projects that are listed in the CIP, and that they are all important to advancing at some point in time in conjunction with, with the city efforts. But what we've tried to do is to prioritize the number of, a number of projects that are the highest priority and relative to the others would move, would be recommended to move forward. So I will walk through these recommendations, and then we also have a number of staff available for questions about particular projects at the end. So just in terms of an overview of what's in the CIP, in the 2019-2020 budget, there were 73 funded projects. 34 had received additional funding in the current fiscal year. These are broken into seven categories that are listed on the slides, and we'll refer back to those throughout the presentation. And then also just wanted to call your attention to the programmatic categories in the budget, in the CIP, across the different categories, things related to minor parks improvements, sports renovation, sports fields renovations, a number of other categories. And these, just to clarify what these are, allow for small projects to be implemented under each umbrella with the appropriate funding sources for each of those. So they represent somewhat of a savings account, and as funds build up, we can then make investments in each of those categories to make minor modifications in each area. So tonight, as you've been discussing, most of our focus is on funding for the capital program. So just get one, and so first walk through some background on the funding sources. So annually, the general fund does typically support the CIP with an annual transfer of approximately $3.5 million. In addition to those funds, we supplement general fund, CIP dollars with funds from grants, as we pursue a number of federal, state, regional, and local grant sources. And we have a number of dedicated funding sources for particular topic areas, the water fund, transportation impact fee that the council adopted earlier this year with changes in the rates, the stormwater solid waste fund, there are a number of others, but that gives you a flavor of some of the other dedicated sources. And then we also have some contributions from development agreements for community benefits as well. So one that we'll call, call out specifically that we have not yet programmed monies for is the downtown amenities fund that was identified following the adoption of the El Camino Real and downtown specific plan for use to move forward with parking improvements and downtown connectivity improvements related to the, to what was identified in the specific plan. So that's one example of a development agreement negotiated funding source. In prior fiscal years, we've also used surplus revenues at the end of the year to pre-fund a number of CIP projects. So a couple are listed on the screen. Two of those are recently completed with the Santa Cruz Avenue sidewalks, first phase, connecting downtown to Hillby Middle School, and then also the Nealon Park Playground that was completed earlier this year. So all of these funds are then allocated each year to projects, which then leads us into a proposed plan for the 2020-2021 CIP. So what this represents is currently proposed is roughly a $24 million infrastructure investment with just over half of that coming from the general fund CIP per the recommendations in the staff report, and the balance, just over $11 million, coming from other funding sources like those dedicated funds as well as grants. And then just building on the conversation you just completed related to the budget, we've also spent the last few days looking at maximizing our use of alternative funding sources to the general fund CIP and reduced that contribution need even further down to $10.5 million in order to try and preserve as much of the general fund flexibility as we can as we look forward into the next budget year. So what that $10.5 million breaks down into is the $3.5 million annual transfer for those recurring projects, just under a $4 million need for one-time projects, and then $3.2 million for flood control projects, which we'll talk about specifically what those are as we go forward. And then just as a preview, and as summarized in the staff report, we're really asking tonight for council direction on two, two questions. One is whether to reconsider any of the currently funded projects from the current budget year or prior carryover years. And secondly, confirmation on the recommendations for the projects in the upcoming year. And again, we're focused on projects to be funded by the general fund, which we're most concerned about making sure that our investments are strategic in the general fund right now. So as we've moved forward, in order to formulate our recommendations, we looked at three key criteria to evaluate each project as shown on the screen. So those represent the level of priority. So projects have been categorized into tiers one, two, and three with tier one being the highest priority, tier three being the lowest. And again, I just want to recognize that this is relative and that all the projects are, are important to move forward at some, some level as well. Secondly, we looked at whether a project was requisite or not, and we use the four key criteria shown on the screen, whether there's a legal regulatory compliance need to do the work, preserving city assets, the pound, or excuse me, the ounce of prevention and pound of cure description that's been used a couple of times tonight, grant funding timelines, and whether we're looking to correct an existing deficiency. And finally, the third criteria is whether or not we had made, we had planned to make significant progress in the upcoming fiscal year relative to the resources we have currently in place in order to execute projects. So with that, I'll summarize staff's recommendations on the next two slides, and then I will move into the specific recommendations for the project categories. So as we will show, we've recommended proposed changes to what was in last year's budget, looking at a handful of new project opportunities, whether or not there are alternative funding source recommendations, and then if there are projects that should be delayed to a future year that don't need to be advanced right now. We're also going to present a summary of the projects in each category on the following slides, as I mentioned. And then there are a number of completed projects over the last 18 months or so that we're recommending those balances revert back to the fund balance and could be reapplied to future efforts. This is a typical process that we do as projects complete, but we just wanted to call these out as they were listed in the staff report, but they won't show up on the following slides just to get, simplify a little bit of what we will be recommending. So in addition, we're also recommending that council consider repurposing funds from a number of the currently funded and carryover projects in order to fund more urgent current needs. And those two projects we'll cover in more detail later as we go through the specific recommendations, but are related to furniture replacement in the buildings and systems category, and then the downtown parking structure study in the streets and sidewalks category. So those funds could be then reprogrammed in a future year closer to when we'd anticipate needing to expend them. Neither of those projects is anticipated to be advanced significantly in the next two to three years, so that was part of formulating that recommendation. And then once those, we are looking to reprogram them, we could also look at alternative funding sources where we have them in order to replace those funds. So moving into the specific recommendations, I'll first just orient you to the table in front of you. This is a shortened version of what was attached in the staff report as attachment E, but the projects on the screen are those that either are proposed for new funding in the upcoming year of 2021, or are carryover projects that have received funding that we have not fully expended as of December of 2019. So the projects are listed, the priority, whether or not they're requisite, and whether or not we anticipate to make progress are the first few columns. And then we show the available budget again as of December of 2019, the planned monies that were listed in last year's budget for each project for the upcoming year. Those funds have not yet been allocated, and that's what we're tiering our recommendations off of to start. The staff recommendation, and then what's requested and recommended by staff as part of the direction we're seeking from, from council tonight. So the projects that are then bolded are the ones that I will highlight for each of the sections as we go through. And then those that are not bolded are not recommended for change, but we could certainly come back and answer any questions. And we can also take council direction on any of those efforts as well, if there's something that you'd like to not move forward going, going forward after tonight. So the first one that we'll mention is the Bell Haven Community Center and Library, where this is identified as a high priority for the city to advance and was added as a new project to the. and was added as a new project to the priority list earlier this year. So we're recommending that that be added to the CIP. And we've repurposed a handful of other projects that were earmarking funds for the facilities that the community center and library building would replace. So improvements to Annette Harris, Community Center, as an example, could then be rolled in and applied to support the work to deliver the community center and library going forward. The second one on the screen that I will highlight, it was not in the staff report, but we've since done a review and had some internal discussions on the IT master plan implementation project. And we think that there's sufficient carryover balance from the prior years. So while the staff report had recommended keeping the additional appropriation for the upcoming year, we'd actually like to remove that so that will help reduce some of the budget numbers that we'll summarize at the end. But we think the 1.8 million that's available is sufficient to advance any IT initiatives over the coming year ahead. So that's a recommendation that will change from what was shown in the report. Third on this slide is the city buildings minor category. We normally see a transfer of $500,000 to support minor building improvements and each, at each of the city facilities over the year ahead. Given the fund balance that is currently available at just under 1.3 million, we've recommended to reduce that appropriation for the upcoming year. We think that will allow us to make the improvements that we would need in that category. An example of something that would be done in this project, in this programmatic category, is looking at the main library building where there's some dry rot to the wood eaves that overhang the building that need to be replaced to prevent further damage. So that's something we were looking to complete over the next few months prior to the shelter in place order being put in place. So that's an example of something that we would look to use these these programmatic funds to complete. And finally, on this page is the furniture replacement project. This was a funding proposal that went along with the recommendation for reconstructing the main library a number of years ago and would provide, would have provided the funds to be able to replace the furniture interior of the building once that project was, once that building was reconstructed. So we don't see that that is money that would need to be expended in the upcoming, upcoming years. So that's $400,000 that we're recommending would be returned to the fund balance at this time. So then moving on to the environment category, there are a number of planned projects that are underway in this bucket. The two that I will mention are the electric vehicle charging stations at city facilities where, as part of the staff report, we had identified to keep those funds. This is, these are funds that are currently allocated or planned to be allocated from the general fund CIP. But we know that there are a number of potential grant sources available that we've been closely tracking thanks to the city's sustainability manager, Rebecca Lucky. And so we think that between the climate action plan implementation line above with $100,000 there, we could use that money for local matching and then pursue the grant funds to move ahead with the EV charger installation. And then the other I just wanted to mention briefly is not proposed for a change. That's the hydration station project. And the reason we didn't make a change to that one, and it was mentioned during the budget discussion on the previous item, I just wanted to call out that it's funded from the solid waste fund. And so even if we were to revert, to delay that project, revert those funds back to the fund balance, they could only be used for things in relationship to solid waste. So it wouldn't necessarily help with the general fund balance that we were looking to achieve as part of the overall direction. Then the next category is parks and recreation. So a number of recommendations here. The first on the list is the park playground equipment. This was $500,000 that was planned after playground safety audits were completed in late 2015 or so in order to upgrade equipment at both Burgess Park and Willow Oaks Park. And so through our experience at Nealon Park and the cost of making those improvements over the last, last year and a half, we recommended increasing the budget for this one by repurposing one of the other projects later down the list, the Civic Center campus improvements, which were planned for $300,000 for the upcoming year. So those were combined and reallocated to the park playground equipment line. These are also funds that were planned to be from the general fund, but we've identified that those could also come from either Measure T bonds or from the Recreation in Lew fee that's collected as part of new residential development in the city. So that summarizes the recommended changes on the parks, parks projects. Then moving into stormwater. We have also a number of recommended changes here. Two of the major projects are regional flood control projects that we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. So the Bayfront Canal and Atherton Flood Channel Protection Project. We're anticipating a request from the multi-agency partnership that's pursuing that work. And we think that they will be likely requesting $1.2 million to proceed with that work. And then the San Francisco Creek upstream of US 1, US 101 flood protection project. We're currently listing a placeholder for what we expect the potential request from cities to be for that work at $2 million. So those two combined represent the $3.2 million in flood control projects that we outlined at the, at the early, during the early part of the presentation tonight. And then finally, one project that we're recommending be delayed to a future year is repair of the Willow Place Bridge abutments, where we have ongoing efforts to monitor how those are, the condition that the abutments in. And so do not see the need to advance that project in the next fiscal year. And we'll keep, keep monitoring the condition so that if it does become a more urgent need, we could advance it in the future year. So moving into streets and sidewalks. And one, one project to highlight on this page, and then the table will continue onto the next slide as well. The downtown parking structure study that I mentioned early in the presentation as well. This is an effort that followed up on work related to the El Camino Real and downtown specific plan that was adopted and had identified funds to do a conceptual design of a parking structure. And then there was additional money put in place in order to seek out proposals for potentially adding additional land use onto the parking plazas. So where this stands is that there is a number of efforts that we need to proceed with in order to revisit the zoning regulations for the downtown parking plazas, which are currently limited to only the ability to provide parking. And then we'd need to do environmental clearance in order to allow those land uses to exist. And so we know that that's going to take a number of years to proceed forward. And so would not foresee the need to do conceptual designs for the parking structure in the next two to three years. And so we're recommending that that money could be reverted back to the fund balance to help with some of the nearer term priorities that we've identified. Understand that this may be a difficult discussion in relationship to the importance of parking downtown. So this is one we'd be happy to answer additional questions about as well as we go forward. And then two other projects in the streets and sidewalks category. The streetlight conversion, which is a project where in three different neighborhoods of the city today, we have what are called series circuits. And those, that means that the streetlights are on a series line, similar to Christmas lights where one light goes out and the entire string goes out. If one light goes out or there's an issue with the line, then the whole neighborhood goes out. So you may recall, we've had outages in the Lynnfield Oaks neighborhood, the suburban park flood triangle neighborhoods, as well as an area of western Memo Park kind of between Santa Cruz and Valparaiso and near Cotton Street. And so this project was phased over a number of upcoming years in order to do work to replace those series circuits with modern upgraded lines in order to eliminate that series issue. And so what we've recommended here is to delay part of the appropriation so that we could do some of the construction, but a smaller area of work for the upcoming fiscal year. And finally, the Welcome to Memo Park Monument signs. We're recommending to delay those construction funds planned for next fiscal year to a future year. So that represents $400,000 that would be able to be repurposed for other, other nearer term needs. Moving into traffic and transportation. So in this category, there are very limited number of projects that use the general fund CIP budget. And so a lot of these projects are funded through the Measure A sales tax that comes in through the county transportation authority, as well as are funded through grants and the city's transportation impact fee program. So we don't have a lot of recommended changes here, but one new project is the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant Funded Improvements that the council authorized earlier this year. As of last week, we were notified by MidPen, who was our partner on the application and from the Strategic Growth Council, that we're still in the running for those funds. So we're holding out hope that in the next few weeks, we'll get word that they will be awarded to the Sequoia Bellhaven project as well as the infrastructure improvements that we had partnered with them on. And then secondly, the transportation projects minor category. Now that we have the updated TIP program in place, we could swap out the funding source on this project from the general fund CIP to the TIP. So we're not recommending a change in the funding amount, but we are recommending a change to the funding source in order to use the TIP funds before we'd extend, expend the general fund CIP dollars. And then finally, the water system is our last category. These are all projects, the projects that are funded through the water fund. So there's no general fund CIP dollars in this category as well. But I'll just walk quickly through a handful of recommended changes that we've identified in order to align with the planned delivery of capital, the capital program for next year. So first is a change to the water, emergency water storage and supply project. So where we had planned to request funds for the upcoming year to advance that work, there's sufficient carryover budget on the order of $2.1 million in that, that project that we don't anticipate needing additional funds in the next, next fiscal year. And then we would delay that appropriation to a, to a future year once we'd need to advance those, those efforts. Progress is still being made on a number of alternatives for emergency supply and storage. But we think the carryover balance is sufficient to pursue those in the next year. The water main replacement project, there was originally planned for $3.6 million needed for the upcoming fiscal year. But we've identified in order to pursue the two key water main replacements that we've identified for next year, we'd only need closer to $1.8 million in conjunction with another line item that's already on the books for fire flow capacity improvements as well. And then finally, the last two, the reservoir roof replacement, as well as the upgrade to automated meter reading. Those are two efforts that we anticipate being ready to award construction contracts in the upcoming year. And in order to do that, we're requesting that funds be advanced so that those contracts could be awarded and funds encumbered in the upcoming year. But we'd likely not fully extend all of those funds in 2020, 2021. Work would likely continue into the next fiscal year, but we'd need to have the full funding amount in place in order to award that, those contracts there to proceed. So in summary, what we, these recommendations have incorporated, reduce the total requested funds from just under $29 million down to just under 24th, an 18% total reduction in the planned delivery of capital projects in 2021. There are new funds requested for 29 projects as we've reviewed. And then we're maximizing as much, as much as we can, the alternative funding sources to try and reduce that general fund CIP contribution, an additional 17% from what you saw in the staff report at $12.5 million. And then the summary, as we mentioned at the beginning, this results in the $3.5 million annual transfer, the $3.8 million for one-time projects, and the $3.2 million for flood control projects as we reviewed. So in closing, the direction that we're requesting from the council tonight is whether to, again, reconsider any of the 2019, 20 funded projects or carryover projects that were listed. The two that staff had recommended are the downtown parking structure study and the furniture replacement. And then finally, confirmation on recommendations for 2020, 2021 projects moving into next fiscal year. And then I can leave some slides up on the screen as well. But the direction that we're requesting on specific projects highlight the two proposed carryover projects that we've recommended to be repurposed. And then a few, a handful of others where we would like to hear from the council as to what you'd like to see proceed. So one is the downtown streetscape improvements, where there's carryover funds as well as money planned for the upcoming fiscal year that could be used to do some targeted improvements on, in the downtown related to trying to rejuvenate the downtown once the current situation may, may have eased or passed completely. Another is the street resurfacing project. So last week at the council meeting, you had a discussion about quiet pavement. And our current street resurfacing project does not include budget for moving forward with any quiet pavement treatments on the future year work. And so we just wanted to make sure that that was clear and understand the council priorities for how to advance street resurfacing in the coming year. And then finally, the downtown parking utility undergrounding priorities. This was a project the council took action on in February to establish three districts. So depending on your direction on other projects this evening, we would coordinate that undergrounding work with potentially planned future projects. And then we'd expect to come back to the council to prioritize which of those three districts we would advance in order to meet the timelines that are set by the CPUC in order to utilize the funds to do the undergrounding. So I know that's a lot of information. We'll stop there and then be happy to answer any questions on the recommendations or other project specific questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGaughy, for the presentation. Councilmember Mueller?
Get ready, here comes a curve ball. I have a colleague who serves on the Finance and Audit Committee, who for as long as I've known him has told me we have an asset in the water company that could be sold to save the city money. And, and for a time period, that was a question that I was like, are you sure? And now we're at a time period where like, hmm. So my question to staff is, have you considered looking at the water company as an asset that could be sold right now for both long-term savings and to bring money into the city?
Yeah, no, that's a curve ball, definitely. Yeah, no, that's a curveball, definitely. So I think we've generally heard the feedback about the water system and potentially looking at a sale. It's not factored into the specific recommendations tonight, but one of the things that we'd have to balance out is the, it's certainly an asset, but there's also a liability that comes with it with the needed improvements to the system. And so it's certainly something we could look at going forward, but it wasn't factored into the overall recommendations tonight.
As a quick follow-up, I had the same question and was told that all the people who receive water from the city would have to pay more if they got sold to Cal Water. And so a lot of people would be unhappy about that, but we can talk about it further.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, at this point, like, all options on the table. Like, I don't know if that's true or not. But at this point, when we're looking at a reconfiguration of city services anyway as a result of this, why not look at it? So it is something that's-
I worry about short-term solutions that maybe aren't so good in the long term.
There's no way to know unless you look at it. There's no way to know unless you look at it. And when we're looking at things, I do know it's something that comes with quite a bit of expense for the city as well and liability. And so for a, and so I think it's something that we should try to do an analysis on and figure out, does it make sense at this time to do that? Assuming that there's a buyer out there who'd be interested in buying it. But I can see, I can see some arguments of why that would save the city money because there's a lot of deferred maintenance, as we see taking place right now in different parts of the city. And it could be an asset sale that would help us through a time period that we're in right now. So.
I've heard that the maintenance is paid for. It's not a liability to the city in terms of that, but we can always look into it.
Yeah, the water fund does fully support all of the water maintenance work that we do, all of the projects that were listed in that last summary table on the water system are fully funded by rate payers that pay in. So that's fully covered. And I also put a plug in, in the next month, the council will also be seeing the water rate study come before you. So that's a looking at water rates for customers for the next five years. So you received an informational item in mid-March that kind of changed the approach where we're not recommending rate increases for users to the system in the next year, recognizing kind of the circumstances that many folks are in, just related to the economic conditions. And so that's another place where you'll have the ability to see some of the water system financials kind of fully fleshed out.
Yeah, so my concern really is, I understand the waterfront covers scheduled maintenance, but we've had, you know, it's like, we've had a number of problems recently that probably aren't covered by the waterfront. And it's kind of like when you're talking about hurricanes in Houston, like, there's only so many times you can have 100-year floods before you start to think, maybe there's something more going on with the system. So, and that being said too, there's other liabilities associated with it. So I just think it's something to be looked at and thrown into the mix. But I know, I realize it's a curveball and don't want to get council diverted from the rest of, rest of the topics.
Are there any follow-up questions for staff before we take public comment, Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, just a quick question. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. On the charts, when it says available budget, and so that's available budget from 2019 to 2020? Or is that, I just want to get a sense of what time period that available budget number covers?
Right. Yeah, good question. We've looked at these numbers so many times that they start to explain themselves after so much time with them. But the available budget column represents the budget that's available currently for the project that represents the status as of December 2019. So it's any budgets that were allocated this year in the CIP, in prior CIP years, and represents anything that we've made progress on and what's remaining in that fund as of December.
And so like, if I'm looking at sort of sports field renovations and it says available budget $300,000. So has that $300,000 been expended already under the available budget? And if so, like, has it all been expended or some portion of it been expended? Or does that still sit in a city bank account?
Yep. So the available budget, the $300,000 was money programmed and appropriated in 2019, 2020. It's still available. It has not been expended at this point in time. And then the reason we had recommended an additional $300,000 for the upcoming year as well is because we're seeing some pretty significant degradation in some of the sports fields, particularly since we have not been applying herbicides. And so we'll see the need over time to renovate those fields more, more completely in order to deal with that different type of maintenance.
And then just one final question. So every time I see available budget, that is money currently in a city bank account?
Correct. Correct. So it's in the general fund CIP allocated to that project.
So, okay, so it literally is available?
Right. So from staff perspective, it's available for work on that project. From the council perspective, it's available.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I have a question somewhat along the lines of the available budget. And that's when there's available budget and then there's, so I'm specifically looking right now under stormwater. And there's an available budget in the Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel flood project. Available budget's $182,295. There's a new allocate, the needs for 2021 is 1.2 million. When you said that that's what was going to be needed by the, the water district or, not the water, but there's the-
Multi-agency.
Multi-agency, thank you. Why are we not, if they needed 1.2, why are we not accounting for the 182, essentially 183,000? When we're getting this tight, every bit counts.
So I apologize, I was using round numbers. So they have identified approximately 1.2, but we did account for the carryover of the $182,000 that's available as part of our assessment on what we need to meet the need of what they have asked for.
So, okay, so you are actually accounting for all of that? So we're not leaving money sitting in the pot which could possibly be used? And then anytime it's in, identified as a special fund, like the recreation in Lou, that is money that cannot be transferred back into the general capital fund? So it's not available for other purposes. It's available for other purposes within that narrow use constraint? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then, well, actually, let me stop there at this point.
At this time, Ms. Herron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. At this time, it looks like I have one hand raised from our list of attendees. So at this time, I'll ask any of our members of the public who are with us and want to speak on this item, which is provide direction on CIP projects and funding proposals, to please engage that raise your hand feature next to your name and it should be on your top right corner toolbar. At this time, I'm going to be unmuting Tom Cabot. Tom, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Thank you, council, for taking such a good look at the budget and the CIP. A couple of thoughts occurred to us looking at that. Anyway, I'm a utility, or excuse me, an environmental quality commissioner. And my fellow commissioner, Josie Gayard, mentioned the idea that perhaps in the waste fund, the hydration stations budget of roughly $340,000 to fill water bottles could save a lot more greenhouse gas emissions if it were deployed into another waste project, maybe hyper-managing the landfill gas emissions from the bayfront landfill. You know, regulating them and managing them down to well below the allowed limits. So that might be a way to demonstrate leadership to thousands of other landfill owners and managers about, you know, we don't just have to meet regulations. We can manage landfills to emit even less methane than they're allowed to emit. So that was one idea for maybe reallocating to have more impact during this tough time. Another would be maybe to, in general, in the CIP, to look at the possible use of bonds where you borrow money to be repaid over time for the new projects that would be built within the CIP budget. So they would, these projects would be serving future folks and they would be paid for with bond funds. So that it may make sense during this tough time to take advantage of the low interest rate environment that may persist and to do some borrowing in bonds to do significant CIP projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Our next public comment comes to us from Dina Levin. Dina, you are unmuted. Would you like to share your public comment? You may at this time. It's like you might still have yourself muted, Dina.
Unmute? Aha, great. There's another unmuted. All right. Well, thank you very much. I have this running on my cell phone. We are living in the future in this strange world. Dina Levin, Memo Park resident. Thank you very much to staff and to city council who are dealing with this very difficult budget environment. And a couple of comments about the CIP. In one item that I see is, you know, remains and is not proposed for change in amount is the Climate Action Plan. I would encourage you to keep the funding for the Climate Action Plan, but look for some opportunities that may be present during this epidemic year to do projects differently. For example, if there are buildings that are unoccupied, are there opportunities to accelerate building retrofits for energy conservation and electrification? There may be such opportunities to change and take advantage of the different environment that we are in. I am glad to see in scrutinizing the categories that it looks like the middle undercrossing of the Caltrain tracks is in a TIF category that can't be swapped back into the general fund. Because in terms of what to keep and what might maybe to swap, things that are time-sensitive should be kept. And Caltrain electrification is actually accelerating with the less frequent trains. And so if we miss the window to build it with electrification, that would make that project significantly harder to do and more expensive to do. And would also encourage you to consider the earlier presentations about the needs of small businesses and childcare workers and other service needs that protect our residents and to look at anything that can be discretionary and can be deferred without damage. Because if we lose a childcare business or some other business or have, you know, challenges with people keeping their homes, we have lost something permanently. And I think there are some items in here that could be deferred for a year or two without permanent loss. So thank you very much for considering these difficult decisions.
Thank you, Dina. Mayor Taylor, I see no more raised hands. I have no public comments submitted through the questions feature and nothing received via web form. I turn the meeting back over.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I was going to say, if you were ready to, if you were going to speak, feel free to go first. Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to see if Ms. Nagaya can follow up on any of the public comments specifically. I think it was Tom Cabot that talked about bond measure, just looking at other sources of funding specific to climate action.
Great. Yeah, we'd be happy to. So right now, the city had looked at, just limited to the Measure T bonds in terms of bonding. So those were a bond measure that was passed in order to support improvements to the parks and recreation system. A number of years ago, there was one round of bond sales and we could look at a second that would help fund recreation facilities and park improvements. It wouldn't fund maintenance, but it would fund expanded or new infrastructure for parks. So that's what we currently have, I believe, on the books in terms of bond potential that's currently authorized. A new bond measure would need to be approved before we could go forward with that. But it's something we could definitely consider for major capital projects. I know we're focused tonight on year 2021, but there are a number of large improvements in the future years as well that could benefit from that bonding discussion more broadly. Grade separation is one that comes to mind, grade separation of the Caltrain tracks particularly.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. I have a question about the chart. There, some of the items on here do not have a tier, a one, two, or a three. Specifically on Parks and Rec and Stormwater, the Willow Place Bridge, it doesn't have a priority tiering?
Right. So there are a handful, so the Willow Place Bridge abutment particularly did not have a tier because it was proposed for a future year. And then our recommendation was to delay the funding. So we didn't assign it a priority because it was just by definition a lower priority based on the need not being there this fiscal year. But as I went through the presentation development tonight, I think we did, I did catch a couple that we missed filling in before the staff report published on Friday, just given the pace that we're currently operating and trying to get things out to you. So if there are other particular questions, I can pull the slides up that we presented tonight. Those filled in a couple of those holes as well.
Okay, I think there was actually only, well, there's the, on the streets and sidewalks, there's Willow Oaks Park Connector that doesn't have a tier. The, and that one would be tier one, tier two, or tier three?
Tier three. And that was another that was proposed for funds this upcoming year, but didn't have- And that was another that was proposed for funds this upcoming year, but didn't have prior funds for it.
Okay, and then the Bellhaven Pool MP implementation?
Yep, so that was the Bellhaven Pool Master Plan implementation that was planned in last year's budget before it moved down the path of the Community Center and Library Project and considering the pool through that work. So.
Is it tiered?
So what we did with that one was move it into an umbrella of the Bellhaven Library and Community Center Project under the Buildings and Systems category. And we'd expect that's tier one, but we understand the council still has to have a conversation about funding specifically for the Bellhaven Pool.
Okay, and then the Willow Place Bridge, is that tier one, tier two, or tier three?
That's actually not recommended for funding, so no tier assignment right now. Maybe next year.
Okay, and then going back to Parks and Rec with the Aquatic Center, this for the maintenance costs? So is any of the maintenance costs covered by whomever we contract with?
So I may need to call in some reinforcements for this one. I believe the contract assigns a good portion of the maintenance to the city. But I know we have a number of staff, Justin or Chris, if you have an answer to that one.
I'm just thinking about, for the city to be able to save, to make some type of effort around savings, and so just looking at the cost. Hello, Mr. Murphy.
So, did you hear the question I asked, Ms. Nagaya? I think, okay, you're on mute.
Okay, now I'm on, now I'm on muted. Normally, I'm the one responsible for muting myself, but yes. Let's see, yes, so Justin Murphy, Deputy City Manager, Nikki Nagaya did a good job answering that question that the current contract that we have with the operator, the city's responsible for maintenance. A previous version of the contract had maintenance responsibilities with the contractor, but that arrangement changed over the past couple of years.
Okay, but there's opportunity in a, to revisit the contract to look at maybe negotiating something a little different to lessen the cost, the burden to the city around maintenance?
That's, it's definitely a potential to re, I think that the city would be potentially either renegotiating existing contract or issuing an RFP. So there's been kind of different options in front of the council in that regard. And it depends on which route the city goes down. I can say that we transitioned previously from city responsibility for maintenance, I mean, operator responsibility maintenance to city responsibility maintenance over the past couple of years. So I wouldn't hold out a whole lot of hope for that, but it's a possibility. It may be with a different operator.
Okay.
Or maybe the city, city taking on responsibility to operate, which is a whole nother story, so.
Okay.
Second for that.
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so a question for Ms. Nagaya, going back to the, to the chart. So like, when it says, welcome to Menlo Park Monument signs, right, and available budget one eighty and planned for 2021, four hundred thousand. And so are both one hundred and eighty thousand dollars and the four hundred thousand dollars being returned, or is the one hundred and eighty thousand in theory being returned right away? And then the four hundred thousand not ever being necessarily allocated to the CIP? Is that how that works?
So what we had recommended there was just to delay the four hundred thousand dollars in the future as part of the first pass of the recommendations we put forward in the staff report. But I think we could also pursue returning the one hundred eighty of available balance. Is that, that work is not advanced, just based on staffing constraints right now.
Because is there something that the one hundred eighty gets us? Like, as far as a, you know, a certain amount of signs? Or is it just that it's part of like a foundation of a fund that you're building up? And that it won't be until you reach whatever it is, the total funding amount? And that, so you want to keep that one hundred and eighty and you're, we're gonna delay the four hundred for a little bit? Or is it, is that one hundred and eighty gonna get spent for something like very soon?
So the one hundred eighty was for planning and design for the locate, identifying the locations and doing community outreach to identify exactly where they should go and what they should look like. And then the four hundred thousand dollars was for construction. So we know we won't need the construction funds if the planning and design work isn't complete, so that's why we had delayed the four hundred thousand dollars from next year. But because we don't anticipate making significant progress on that effort in the next year, if you'd like to look at returning the one eighty, that's something that we could look at as well.
Are there other instances that are sort of similar to that, where we're holding over money for these longer-term projects that we were willing to delay? But, but we still want to keep a certain amount of the money earmarked toward that, you know, still reserved for it. Because, yeah, for me, it's like, just to transition very quickly from a question to, you know, position, I, if we're sort of delaying the monument signs, then I don't want to earmark a future four hundred thousand and I want to get that one hundred and eighty back. And then I will deal with the whole monument sign issue in the future. But I don't want to hold over that money, especially when we're, you know, when we're gonna get to some very, very difficult decisions. I don't see how I can rationalize, like, yeah, I need to keep, I need to keep two hundred K for my future monument signs.
Yeah, I understood, and that's where I think the council direction tonight will be, will be definitely helpful as we inform how we move forward on a number of these efforts. I would say what I did in response to that question was scanned the two columns of whether a project was requisite and whether progress was planned in 2021 and where those are both no. That's where I think we could then look closer at providing some suggestions to council to reconsider those carryover balances. So I'll give it an example. Is the gatehouse fence replacement where we had identified funds for planning and design? We've expended a portion of the allocated budget. This is actually a case where we thought we could make progress next year in planning ahead for resurfacing of Ravenswood Avenue in the next year or two. But that may be a place where, just in terms of priorities that we want to reconsider. So we could go through that list of projects that are kind of no and no and try to narrow down from there.
Yeah, that would be great. And, you know, full disclosure, as you and I think other on staff know, one, I've been a big proponent of the monument signs. And I think the city manager can attest to that specifically. And I have been a proponent of replacing the gatehouse fence, or at least those portions where it has fallen down. And so I know that some amount of these projects come from past council direction. But for me, they're, they're, again, all on the table. And, you know, again, like I say, I couldn't rationalize setting aside money for projects that are being delayed.
Councilmember Mueller.
I'm gonna save everybody a lot of time and just say that. I think I made a similar statement in the first item this evening. Everything's on the table for me. And I, we gave you some pretty tough decisions to make, so bring back the recommendations.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. Councilmember Combs brought up the gatehouse fence. The Junior League is in the gatehouse and they pay rent to the city for that. Possibly the Junior League might be interested in fixing the gatehouse. And then they can pay less in rent over a period of time. You know, I'm suggesting there are ways that we might be able to partner with people as well to do cost sharing and to find solutions in this as it moves forward. Trying to move this forward. You've all heard me before and it's a very, very painful subject for me when we talk about downtown parking. Because every single year I've been on council, we've said, absolutely, we're doing that next year. And then the next year comes and we say, oh, no, absolutely. And then the guild comes and we say, well, we don't have to worry about parking because we're gonna be doing the downtown parking. So we're gonna pass this and we're gonna do that. And it's a very dangerous thing when you start depending on things that keep getting kicked. But saying that, I understand it has to be. It's not critical. And it upsets me a lot, but we're making difficult decisions. I think that where we get down into the detail on this is if you look on page H1.2, it talks about review of projects and it says whether the project is requisite. And Nikki Nagaya had, I actually took a, I took a photograph, I take photographs of things people show on screen so I can remember it sometimes. And Betsy Nash does this too, and it's a good way to remember. And she talked about, what are the things that we're gonna look, that we're gonna keep on the list? Generally, it's things that are mandated by law because we have no choice. It's things that are necessary to preserve useful life because it's either going to impede people or it costs us more in the long run. It's things that are time-sensitive to make sure that we have the funding. I think that what you showed me, Nikki, was a, I was impressed. That was a very good understanding philosophically. I don't know if you want to show us again, but I thought that was, that was a really good overview of, yeah, these are the things that we can't lose, no matter how emotionally attached we are or logistically attached we are to certain things. I thought that was a very good, there we go, regulatory compliance, preservation of assets, grant funding timelines, and correcting an existing deficiency. The last one, I would be a little bit more weak on, like, it would have to be it's going to fall off or injure someone deficiency. But I think that's a pretty good guideline that we can agree on to move forward and then you can come back with further things. But it hurts to lose some of the things on this list. But we have to be strong and make the right decisions. But anyway, I was gonna put it forward to my colleagues that I thought this was a very good evaluation criteria. And thank you for that.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I actually, I agree with everything that's been said. I think, given the direction that we've just given about the 2020 to 2021, I think we need to be assuming that most things are coming off the list and have to be justified to stay on. And really, it is something that, pretty much as far as what is requisite. But I think, again, it's a little bit refined as far as what really cannot be deferred. And that's really along the lines of health and safety and well-being of our residents and businesses. And we also want to make sure we're taking advantage of valuable funding opportunities. But having said that, our, we have a lot of staff openings, for example, in the Transportation Department. So one of the things I'm concerned about is I think the middle undercrossing is incredibly important to get moving. And I'm concerned that we're spreading ourselves too thin, even if we have some funding in other areas, that we really need to focus and get this Middle Avenue crossing done. I also have heard that there is, and I don't know it has been, so I now sit on the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group. And there's been a discussion prior to the COVID crisis, so I don't know what's happening now, but it's about the, they're going to look at possible funding sources, possibly for grade separation across the entire line. And so I think one of the things we want to do, and there may also be federal infrastructure money that comes available to stimulate the economy. So one of the things I think we want to do is make sure that we're in a position to take advantage of some of these funding measures for critical infrastructure projects that we have in our city. And we really need to weigh which ones can, which ones do we have staffing to do? And then the items where we don't have staffing or which can be deferred, I think we do need to think critically, as Councilmember Combs was saying, about repatriating the money whenever possible to the, back to the general fund and possibly having some sort of list of what, you know, keeping track of what we're doing. But it's, I think we need to be very serious and it'll be, now's the time when we really need to look closely at everything and cut projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I agree completely about middle and everything that you just said, Councilmember Nash. The only, the only thing I would like to see us keep, because there are also certain projects, to add to kind of that critical list that we just looked at, they're projects that will save us a lot of time and money. So things like replacing lights, you know, replacing inefficient things that need to be replaced. And the transportation, the IT master plan can help us with shelter in place because it can help us need fewer staff because people can just get online to get their permits. They don't have to come down. It saves us time, it saves us money, it saves the staff. So I would like to see that stay on. Other than that, I agree with everything else that everyone said.
Can I just ask one clarifying question on that? So specifically for the IT master plan, we have a carryover balance of one point eight million dollars that we were recommending would stay allocated to that project. But what we recommended to delay was an additional appropriation. And so even with the investments that we're looking to make to support remote working and online permitting, we didn't anticipate needing the one, the additional one point two five million dollars.
I wouldn't say additional, but I wouldn't take it away.
Okay, great.
And unless you tell me there's some critical thing that's gonna save us so much time and so much money, I think that's enough.
Great, got it, thank you. Sorry, back to, back to you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. And as a reminder, Ms. Nagaya did send us the updated slides. She emailed them to us before the council meeting. Is that, those were the corrected slides. There was some information that was slightly different than on the slack, on the staff report.
Correct. What was emailed were the slides presented and then just the notes that I used following each table that summarized the recommendations. So you have that in PDF format as well.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarity, so you have enough direction from the council moving forward during the study session with. with what, how we feel about CIP and how to move forward. Just for me, I'll repeat what I said earlier about the city investing in our, in our own city, in our own community needs, in our own business needs. And so if we can look at CIP with that lens about what our immediate needs, taking care of our own small businesses, helping to take care of our own small businesses, helping our residents that are in need, that would be a great way for me, for you to approach the CIP and what stays on and what comes off. The criteria that you put together was very helpful in determining how to look at the chart, even though the chart had a lot of information in there. Once we took the time to actually read through it, most of it made sense. Some stuff was still, a few questions that we still had during the meeting. But I do appreciate how much information you were able to put. I think the charts were only four pages total, so that was pretty good considering, I think 73 projects on there. But I just wanted to make sure that, that we provided staff enough direction to move forward for the next steps, for you to bring us back something.
Great, thank you. Yes, I, I think we have general direction on how you'd like us to proceed for, for project funding proposals. I did have just one confirmation to make and then one, one question confirming things like the street resurfacing project with the potential to add or look at quiet asphalt. I know it was a discussion point at last week's meeting. Our current budget does not allow for that work to be done in the next fiscal year. We would need to, we'd need to increase the, the budget associated with street resurfacing. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and that we had confirmation that we'd be recommending to move forward without quiet asphalt in the next fiscal year.
Councilmember Nash?
Regarding quiet asphalt, I would love to have a little bit more, if staff could spend a little bit more time looking at it and consulting with some other professional, professionals in the field who maybe have some more experience with it. I think one of the first questions to resolve is what councilmember Carlton raised last meeting, which is, is, are there any?
The environmental?
Toxicity, environmental toxicity with it. Because if that's true, if that is, if that is a true concern, then that sort of stops the project there. But in, I reviewed some notes that I had taken and the reports that were provided to me from, or the links that were provided actually said that some of the asphalt can be done at a, at a less, at a two inch asphalt thickness rather than the four inch. And anyway, I just want to look at the economics and make sure that we're, there is not a way to make the economics work and just know how much of a choice are we making? How much of a difference in cost are we making? If in fact, can the thinner asphalt work as is described in the reports? And I'll be glad to meet and talk to you offline, what, discuss the reports that I've, it specifically said that there were economic advantages actually of going with the quiet asphalt. So if we have a lead time, it would be nice to actually find out what the, what it would be like for our city. And then beyond quiet asphalt, a couple of things. If we just, if we need to go ahead with downtown parking utility undergrounding, I would like to seriously consider doing that on Santa Cruz Avenue between Fremont and well essentially Johnson, even though it'll be on the, and see whether we can do that. Right now that's a really narrow sidewalk with lots of impediments. And it's a big issue for social distancing. And since we are going to be in a situation for presumably quite some time where we are going to need to consider social distancing, I think that that would be, it would be an advantageous area to do anyway. But now it's incredibly important to take a look and see whether we can do something to underground there as opposed to anywhere else because of social distancing. And then finally, you'd asked for some, I believe some advice about the downtown streetscape. And councilmember Mueller and I have been talking about the possibility of using Santa Cruz Avenue and actually closing Santa Cruz Avenue down to traffic in order to facilitate having the restaurants accommodate more space for the restaurants and also for people walking and social distancing. And so I would like to have that on people's radar screen that at some point it would soon. As the restaurants open up, there may be some opportunity there to provide some help to our small businesses and to people walking in the street and just generally to the vibrancy of downtown. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, first in response, I just want to say, Ms. Nagaya, I totally hear you on the, the quiet asphalt. And, and certainly don't want to present a situation where we're saying like, cut, cut, cut. But then on the other end saying, oh no, we have to have all these new and flashy things. But, but, and again, I don't know exactly how that process works. But the extent to which it was possible, if, if we're talking about RFPs, like could not, you know, quiet asphalt be an option? In, in these RFPs, like does it add a lot of sort of, you know, complication or complexity to the city's sort of planning process if, if we are sort of like willing to be open to that as, as an option? And so I would just put that out there, but totally, totally hear you on the, that, that we don't have the money for, for quiet asphalt as, as we're cutting.
Yeah, and I think generally we, we could bring back a further policy discussion or meet with council members individually to answer questions about the research we've done and following up on councilmember Carlton's request about investigating the, the potential toxicity. So we, we can follow up on those items. I think that the big, big concern we had was just making sure that it was clear that the budget didn't currently account for quiet asphalt in, in what was planned for resurfacing work in the coming year. And what I, I think the, our preference would be, would be to have that policy discussion prior to going out to bid is what we could see happening is if we include a bid alternate for quiet asphalt, that's going to drive away some amount of interest for contractors who are not qualified to do that work. And so could artificially then inflate our bid prices overall. So we just want to be able to balance those, those things as we go forward. But I, I think we can certainly tee up the policy discussion further in order to, to make sure that what we put out to bid is, is what the council's looking for.
Councilmember Mueller?
On the agenda, I do support shutting down downtown Santa Cruz. Never again, an option, never again, an opportunity like this again. Try it out. So I, does anyone have anything like specific on the CIP to talk about anymore? Cause I'm, guys, I'm getting really tired.
I've noticed and no. I think we've covered everything. Well, councilmember Nash has another comment.
I would just, my only comment is that councilmember Mueller and I are on the climate action plan and we are meeting with EQC climate action plan this weekend and will be, I just want to say that that's something where I think that could be a, as has been stated many times, the ounce of prevention, a pound of cure that we will need to just look at at some point in the council when we have more information and definitely with staff. I just didn't want to have that, have this opportunity go by without saying that climate action plan is really important, especially as we see the exponential growth of the COVID crisis and realize that that's also the same thing that we see within the climate action and as people, as we are not doing, taking action. So we really need to, to move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I don't have any additional question about the CIP, but I did want to make sure that we answered all of Ms. Nagaya's questions because I think she, there was two things she wanted to follow up on and I just want to make sure we, we covered that.
I was just going to let the other one go. But since you asked, I can, can put it out there. One, it was following up on, on councilmember Nash's previous comment about transportation projects and, and relative priorities. So as mentioned, we do have a number of vacancies in the team. Three of, of the eight positions, sorry, three of the, the nine positions are, are currently vacant. And we, in order to account for the personnel savings that Mr. Jacobson presented earlier, we are not anticipating to fill those in the foreseeable future. And so that does give us some constraints on, on what we can reasonably move forward with. So there were a handful of projects that we did identify as, as high priority that we would continue to move on. And it's, Middle Avenue was one of them. So we're, we're teeing that up to continue to make progress. One of the, the major next steps will be determining how to move forward with, with property acquisition that may be needed for the project as well as then following up with coordination with, with Caltrain and how to actually construct the project. So those are our next steps there. But we've been making some progress in securing additional funds through, through a couple of alternative sources we're looking at as well as just advancing grant applications for, for calls for projects that we expect to come out this summer. So that's, that's underway right now while people are working remotely. And then the, the specific question there is, is then looking at the, the projects that we are slated to advance in the next year. I know you mentioned Ravenswood grade separation is, is something that Caltrain may be pursuing and just would, would want to get the council's pulse on where you stand in terms of grade separation and the additional studies that, that the council had directed moving forward versus some of the other priorities on, on the list as well. Because the grade separation with the vacancies, we were, we were not anticipating being able to make progress. The council had identified, had approved the scope of work, but we had called out that we wouldn't be able to move that forward until we fill the vacancies. And with the vacancies not filled, we'd have to reduce the other workload in order to move that forward. So if that's something you'd like us to look at, I, I can take another look at the list of projects, but we, we're not planning to, to make significant progress in grade separation this, this coming, the next few months at least.
Councilmember Carlton?
Were Caltrain going to pay for it? If they were moving forward, you said, are, are they actually going to pay for the grade separations?
It's, it's. Actually Nikki, you probably know more about it than I do because you've been in those meetings for much longer. But yes, there, I don't know that they're paying for it, but they're looking for fun. My understanding is that they were talking about looking for funding and how they could help all the, all the cities work together more.
If, if Caltrain pay for it, if they're going to, to pay tens of millions of dollars, I think that's a conversation we should have. But with, you know.
With, they were looking for funding, not that they were going to pay for it, but they were, they realized that it's a huge stretch for the cities and, and that it has to happen. So that they were trying to facilitate some of the work.
Vice Mayor Combs, did you still have a question? No. Councilmember Mueller?
I think we should probably check in with Caltrain to find out. My, my expectation right now is Caltrain is trying to stay fiscally solvent. So I'm not sure that they're, I'm not sure that the money's there for this. So in the short term anyway, so we should probably check in with them. So I think a phone call will kind of clear up real quick whether or not we need to be making capacity for it this year.
Thank you, councilmember Mueller. Ms. Nagaya, were you going to follow up on that or no?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we have given you a direction for the study session. And this item will come back and we'll have more input, I'm sure.
Yeah, so thank you. We are good for tonight. Sorry for the last long question. And then we would bring back CIP recommendations likely as part of the 2021 budget proposal as the next step. So that, that's when you will next see the, the specific recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for including the information about the water rate study and also the increase that there's going to be consideration about the political, the economic climate right now. So thank you. Our next item on the agenda is I 1, update the city council and public on COVID-19 health emergency and the city's response. Here to introduce this topic is Mike Noche, our management analyst and volunteer coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and city council. Can you hear me okay? Great. I will keep this very brief without missing anything and creating more questions. So that being said, my role in the emergency operations center over the last month or so has been as the CERT volunteer liaison. I've been organizing communication between the city's EOC and emergency volunteer organizations. To date, to be clear, the city has not activated volunteers to disaster service workers, but we continue to communicate in case a need does arise. Most cities in San Mateo County are following the same path as Menlo Park. City staff is working very closely also with the fire protection district. We are in constant contact with disaster response manager, Ryan Solikoffers, one of their staff. We, as far as the structure, the fire district does train CERT volunteers, whereas the city is, holds the sole responsibility for activating those volunteers. The Menlo Park Fire Protection District does include Menlo Park, Atherton, East Palo Alto and unincorporated parts of the county. We have been solely in contact with the Community Crisis Management, which is a volunteer organization, and the overarching umbrella. So Menlo Park is an organization that is organizing volunteer efforts with regards to emergency readiness response, which is MPC Ready. Atherton's organization is called ADAPT and East Palo Alto is repacked. I also want to mention MPC Ready does incorporate unincorporated parts of the county. City staff has attended 19 video conferences, meetings with the CCM folks. And we, those have been productive meetings and that started back on March 22nd. Community members and Menlo Park residents are on those calls. The main goal for these organizations typically is community preparedness, training such as CERT and then providing public safety assistance when needed. MPCready.org is the organization's website for the Menlo Park area. There's also more information on MenloFireCERT.com. Lastly, we've been working closely with MPC Ready and helping just with the communication aspect, including some promotional aspects on our website. They are building a block preparedness coordinator network in case the need arises. And they've put in a tremendous amount of effort into doing so. There's 10 areas that incorporate, that are part of the Menlo Park area or within the city. Those areas each have a coordinator or lead broken down into a neighborhood coordinator and then block coordinators and a block coordinator is to. And a block coordinator is typically 10 to 20 households. So there's a, quite the network that is being put together as far as our residents, as far as numbers. Lastly, last point here, volunteer numbers as of April 28th is 306 volunteers are part of the MPC Ready organization, 267 of those representing the city of Menlo Park. And I'll leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions, but I know there's other staff that'll be providing updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noche. Next is our Chief Dave Bertini.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me? Perfect. Good evening, Dave Bertini, Chief of Police. The police department continues to operate at full capacity. To date, we have responded to about 530 calls of shelter in place violations. And, and about, I'd say about three quarters of those, we've, we've issued warnings. We have not made an arrest yet for shelter in place violation. You do know that last week, a new order came into effect requiring face coverings, and it was effective on the 22nd last Wednesday. We do, are now receiving reports of people violating that order. I was out today for about six hours on patrol myself. And I walked through every single grocery store and, and market in, in town. And I saw about a 99% rate of folks actually wearing face coverings. I, I gave out six of the donated ones to those folks that were not to encourage them to wear them since that they're required by the, the new order. So it seems like folks are in fact, are in fact, wearing their face coverings. There is a new order that's going to be coming out in the next couple of days. And based on what we have heard thus far, there was a press release about it that it seems like the current order is going to be extended through May, although the exact date through May has not been stated yet. But there are going to be some easing of some restrictions. So it'll be interesting to see what those changes to the order are. And as those change, those restrictions change, we're going to be changing our, our focus, obviously. So, and, and that's all I have to report. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief Bertini. Are there any follow-up questions? Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up? You're on mute, Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, Chief Bertini. I'm getting some questions about people saying that their gardeners are getting, or that gardeners are getting fined. And why are we giving out $1,000 fines and not to homeowners? And I, that doesn't seem like the right information. Can you clarify, please, what's happening?
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of misinformation about, out there, and people don't quite understand what's going on or what the, the order actually indicates. A violation of this order is a misdemeanor crime. If we enforce it, we actually will arrest somebody. In other words, we will, we, they could be handcuffed, they could be transported, they can be searched, and it's a misdemeanor crime. It's just like being arrested for DUI or battery or vandalism. So if, if an arrest is made, the person is actually arrested, and normally they would be released on their own recognizance. They'll be issued a citation with a court date. In order to get a fine, they have to go through the entire court process. In other words, they normally would get a lawyer, they'd go to court, they'd either have a jury trial or a court trial, and they would either plead guilty or they'd be convicted, and only then would they be sentenced. And the sentence could be up to six months in county jail or a $1,000 fine. So this, this information that people are getting $1,000 fines are, is just 100% incorrect. That's not the way the system works. You have to be convicted in a court, a court of law in order to be fined or, or imprisoned. So I know for a fact that in the city of Menlo Park, we have not, we have not arrested one person for the shelter in place as of yet. We have given multiple warnings. Just today, I actually, on Cotton Street and some other side streets, I, I actually rolled up on a couple of gardeners and I asked them to stop working, got their information, gave them a warning and told them that they shouldn't be working. Along with that, we have implemented a, a system where when we do do that, the dispatch center actually sends a letter, the US Postal Service, to the residents, letting them know that we, we have told their gardeners they can't work at this point and that they, they should, you know, do something to stop that gardening service until the shelter in place order is modified to allow gardeners.
Thank you so much. Absolutely perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton has a question too.
I, I just wanted to also clarify because I've also been getting emails and phone calls, as I'm sure we all have. If I was going to write the, the order, I, I would probably lobby pretty hard that it be the person that owns the house who gets the punishment, not the gardener. However, we did not write the order. This is not coming from the city, and I wanted to make that very clear as well. You can talk to us, we'll explain, but we didn't write it. It, it came from the county. And the important thing for people to realize is that when the county makes an order, when they make a law or rule, we can, we have to follow it. We can make it more strict, but we can't make it more lenient. And so I also, for the people that are calling us and telling us to change it, unless you want us to get stricter with the gardeners, we, that's, that's not what we do. That's the county. And we may, we may see that they've changed that in a few days, but I just wanted to also make that clarification for people.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carlton. That is exactly right. We did not write this order. This is a county order by the county health, health officer, correct?
But I just also, I did speak to the district attorney, and he does have a few people that have been arrested. And he said that those that continue to break the rules, that get arrested, he will prosecute.
Right. And our escalation process was done in, in conjunction with the DA's office. So we're, we're lockstep in what, in how we're going to prosecute it if we get, if we get to that point.
Councilmember Mueller, did you still have a question?
I want to commend the mayor for doing her town halls. And I want to thank Chief for talking to people on the call. You know, I got a call a day from a, a resident who just wanted to vent, right? And I think that there's a lot of residents who just need to vent and know that we're listening and that we're trying. And also have the opportunity to sort of explain why things are. And so if the council was open to it, I'd be open to council just doing a listening session, a session with the public, honestly. Just being like, hey, let's say, why don't you come and tell us what it's been like? Let's try to figure out what we can take from it. So if you guys are down for that, if the mayor's down for that, I just think there's a lot of people out there who just want to share their experiences and then have us understand it, then maybe we can learn something from it.
You know, if, if we're doing something like that, we might also consider inviting our representative on the County Board of Supervisors to come and listen with us. Because it's good for the people on the county level to hear what we tend to hear more of, maybe being the, the first line of, of who people might call. I, I think it might help the, the county supervisors better be able to, to hear and communicate with people as well.
Thank you. And I see heads nodding and agreeing. I'm not sure what type of platform we would offer, but I, it does make sense to listen to our residents, their concerns that they're having, the struggles that they're having during the shelter in place order. I think on this item, we have one more speaker, Ms. Sean, Mr. Sean Reinhardt? You're still on mute.
I've been on mute for so long. I was so used to it. It's really wonderful to be here. Thank you, Council, in recognition of the late hour. I'll try to just be pretty brief with my comments here. I did want to give you an update on the city's service reactivation planning. This would be planning for a cautious transitional reactivation of some onsite services. We have a cross-department team that's been working on this so that we have a state of readiness for that. Earlier today, Governor Newsom did lay out a four-stage roadmap to a reactivation statewide, acknowledging the state is in the first stage right now, which is just like the emergency response, the stay-at-home orders and so forth. And he also indicated that the next stage is possible within as little as a few weeks, in which low-risk business is able to reopen with some modifications. Retailers that offer curbside pickup, some manufacturing sites, some small businesses that have limited public content, contact and so forth. Some public spaces and parks might reopen again with modifications and social distance. And pretty substantially, he noted that school may restart as early as this summer, just to kind of recover from the learning loss. But he also emphasized that local leaders will make those decisions on when to proceed, and he didn't provide a clear timeframe. The additional stages sort of continue to relax the social distancing and other sort of orders designed to control the spread. Things like gyms, hair salons might be in the following stage. And then stage four would be larger events could recommence, and all of those are tied to progress on the pandemic. Things like testing, contact tracing, vaccines. But here locally, we have some goals for our service reactivation planning, and that is to develop the criteria for when we might reactivate a service, identify the priority considerations in play there, organize it into three phases for us, basically short-term, midterm, and long-term. Of the one coming up would be a short, the short-term transitional phase. Establishing the timeline of procedures and then recommending options to the city manager, who is also the Emergency Operations Director. So the criteria that we have put together so far, and this is constantly fluid and in flux as the situation is, is that the shelter in place orders would need to be lifted, relaxed, or modified to allow for some kind of in-house service reactivation to occur. The city manager would need to authorize that, obviously with council's approval. Facilities would need to be disinfected. Protective measures would need to be in place for staff and the public. We'd have to have the resources available to do it, in particular, the equipment, the personal protective gear, but of course, financial and personnel. There would need to be a, a business or public need for the service. Any licensing or other regulatory requirements would need to be met. A plan such as this with far more detail would need to be in place and approved by the department head and the city manager's office. And then, of course, staff would need to be trained in those procedures and protocols. So those are the criteria. Some of the major considerations as we go about this cautious reactivation, possibly in the coming weeks, is the health and safety of everyone involved, city employees, the general public, of course, complying with all the state, county, and city orders and guidance on this issue. And even when there are just recommendations on that the city lead by example, so even if face coverings were only recommended, we would probably go ahead and, and wear them anyway to lead by example. Obviously, the goals are to prevent and reduce the spread of the pandemic. Certainly, just thinking back to some public comments earlier about equity, just thinking about the safety and accessibility for vulnerable populations as we go about this and, and equity, of course. And that the reactivated services can be sustained, and we don't have to shut them down again in just a couple of weeks because we hadn't thought it through and that they weren't adaptable. And then, of course, some of the other considerations on this slide. And additionally, just thinking about how we might transition employees back to work safely in a cautious way over time. Emphasis on that health and safety. We heard earlier about some revenue streams that have been significantly impacted by the cessation of services. And so looking at, can we safely reactivate some of those and when and how? Certainly, the local economy is a, a major concern for everybody involved, and so how could what we do support that, the local economy to recover? And just balancing all of those things. Certainly, there's been a lot of interest on the part of community members, and we've heard some council members express an interest in some construction activity resuming at some point here in the foreseeable future. Certainly, there will be comparisons to other neighboring communities, what they're doing or what they're not doing. Certainly, the community wants to see some services restored. It's been, I think, six weeks now, and it's, you know, it's beginning to show a little bit and people's desires to get back to some semblance of normal. And then, of course, how do we do outreach and education with the community, with staff, as far as like this new way of doing business that we believe is going to be with us for quite some time? So again, for the city of Menlo Park, we're looking at this in three phases. The first one that might be coming up next roughly corresponding to what the state outlined for possibly their stage two would be this transitional phase, the baby steps toward onsite services. Then a phase two would be evaluating and expanding to some additional services as it becomes safe and advisable and allowable to do so. And then phase three would be that long-term, that new normal that we're hearing about. We're, we're pretty certain that it won't be exactly like it was before. So about halfway through here, just to get into a little bit of detail about what the most near-term phase is, this caution transition back, cautious transition back to partial service reactivation. So a hypothetical scenario there obviously would be the shelter in place would need to be modified, and the governor signaled that they could be modified within a few weeks to allow for some reactivation. Obviously, social distancing, face coverings would still be totally required during this phase. The pandemic's still a, a major concern. It's not contained. But the healthcare system would no longer, in immediate danger of being overwhelmed, and so that's why, you know, the cautious steps forward. But testing's still not widely available. Contact tracing is not occurring at scale. No vaccine yet exists, so definitely not out of the woods, and caution is absolutely advised. So we've set some protocols for all city facilities that would have to be in place. Personal protective equipment, disinfecting protocols for all employees when they're in the workplace, face coverings, hand washing, gloves and other gear. We're recommending social distancing, a minimum of 10 feet for all employees if and when they're physically in the workplace, controlling through a single point of entry and exit so that that disinfecting can happen on both ends. And no entry for the public or maybe very restricted and limited circumstances, just to ensure everybody's safety. Also, phasing employees back into onsite work over time, rotating staff so that we don't have a critical mass of too many employees in the building at the same time, which might make it difficult to maintain the social distancing. And of course, the frequent cleaning and disinfecting of the high-touch surfaces. And the police department has really led the way. Yes.
The Reinhardt, I have to interrupt you for a moment because of the time the council needs to vote to stay past 11:00.
Yes, thank you. I can't see the webcam, so thank you for calling me, calling it to my attention.
Welcome. So do we have a, a vote of yes to stay past 11:00? Okay. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Reinhardt.
Great, thank you. And so the police department has led the way. They've been operating 24/7 throughout the entire pandemic. They never stopped delivering service. So they've developed some excellent protocols to protect city personnel and the public during the pandemic, even though they have some pretty high-contact situations with the general public. And so I won't go through this whole list, but just know that we're taking our page from the police department, and we're really grateful to them for their service during this time. And just looking at what I think is, seems like it's the most desired service to really look at closely for potentially transitioning back into some level is the Building Division. Those city staff in the Building Division have been working remotely since the stay-at-home order was issued, but there are several services that they just cannot provide fully remotely. So those are the ones we're talking about. Any onsite reactivation in the City Hall building obviously would require the city manager's authorization, and of course, the city council's approval that that's okay. The protocols I just mentioned would have to be in place. And what we're looking at is preparing for a possible limited reactivation of some of the critical Building Division services we're hearing the most interest in, and also which are important for the community, such as housing construction. So potentially some limited inspections, and it really depends on the details of the health officer's order. Maybe some limited construction reactivation, again, depending on the details of the health officer order and what the city capacity may be and safety considerations, as well as phased permit application, implementation. So not all at once, but in baby steps over time, just to kind of restart that pretty critical service there. Any onsite services would have to be limited by appointment only. The City Hall would be closed to drop-ins, you know, one applicant at a time, face coverings by all parties. City hall would be closed to drop ins, you know, one applicant at a time, face coverings by all parties, plexiglass screens, kind of similar to what some retail establishments have been doing in order to just provide for everyone's safety. So that's a kind of a quick look at what we're working on. We're doing the same type of treatment for all of the city services just to be ready. Of course, not all city services would begin in, in phase one at all. Some of them, it's just not possible. But we're maintaining that state of readiness because we know that a change in the order could happen relatively swiftly and we'd want to be able to get those services back online at the, at the rate that the, that the community is kind of expects. So just looking at what a phase two might look like. This would be evaluating where we are, additional feedback and direction from the health officer and other officials to maybe do a cautious expansion. This might be a scenario in which the pandemic is beginning to be contained. Maybe the social distancing is loosening, the requirements are easing a little bit. Looks like we're making progress on the pandemic, but the resurgence still remains a threat. We're hearing a lot of science out there that indicates a second or third wave could be happening this fall and this winter. So, you know, definitely still caution is advised even in this phase two. And then looking ahead to phase three, this would be the new normal. Certainly, some things are going to be permanent. Of course, resurgence of a, of this pandemic or a new pandemic remains a concern. And I think COVID-19 has really highlighted a number of significant vulnerabilities we have as a, as a society that, you know, we need to address long term with this new normal. So that's the, the quick overview of sort of where we are with that process. It's definitely fluid and ongoing. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And certainly, the, the operating department heads themselves, I think many of them are here if you have any detailed questions for them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for the presentation. Are there any follow up questions from council? Councilmember Mueller?
Have you guys thought about how you're going to have people eat lunch?
Yes, and that really goes back to the social distancing within the building and having staff rotations so that probably fewer than 20% of the staff are in the building at any one time. So that when they do take lunch, they can do it quite far from each other and there isn't that exposure.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Shinehart? Shinehart, forgive me, Mr. Reinhardt.
I kind of like that name too.
The, the $50 million question. Any idea when? When, when this might happen? And are there also plans for, you know, there, there are the theories of it getting better and then getting worse with the second round? And are you planning for that as well?
Yes, we definitely are planning for a potential resurgence. We're definitely staying very closely aligned with the guidance and direction we're hearing from the state and from the county. I think the best answer to your first question is, the governor, I think, gave the best hint that the next stage could be a matter of weeks, not months. That's what he said today. And he didn't give any further, you know, details on that. And we're certainly waiting for the county's modified health order to get the details on that. We're expecting that anytime this week. But it does seem like it's a matter of weeks, not months before that next step.
Councilmember Mueller?
There it goes. So the one thing I would just recommend is that a lot of the discussion right now is looking internal at the city operations. And I know that's because the county's handling a lot of the external. But there is an interface between the two. And so one of the things that I'd be thinking about is that in the next, in phase one, when they really do open up, there's going to be, and you guys have done a good job of internally thinking about how you do surveillance with the temperature checks. But surveillance on a citywide level is going to require them actually going in and testing people. And the city's going to want to probably have input to like, you know, do we want there to be surveillance taking place? It's, you know, at the Stanford construction site. Do we want to, like, have we mapped out internally in the city where, you know, basically, what, if I was city staff, I'd be thinking about where are we going to have, where is there high contact interaction that the county may not be aware of for the surveillance sites? And provide that to them because it'll protect you guys internally from having that enter the building and spreading it somewhere. So, but it's a great plan. So, great job.
Thank you. And you're thinking right there along with us, even a couple of steps ahead of us, I think, for the city. It's, once we're getting our house in order, we definitely need to be part of the solution for, for other businesses, for construction sites so that they can comply as well.
Yeah, it's going to be having that, being integrated into the best places for county surveillance and offering that to them to advance. We'll make sure that we get the best number of surveillance sites within the city.
Ms. Heron, at this time, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. At this time, I do have one public comment received via web form. I will read that comment aloud and display it on the screen. I also ask any member of the public who is still with us to use that hand icon in the top right screen and we can call on you for a public comment. One moment to bring that public comment up. Okay, so this comes from Menlo Park resident Jennifer Baskin. My point of view is some of these SIP rules are taking a disproportionate economic toll on most, on the most vulnerable population of our community. Assuming that people will pay or prepay for these services without work is a false assumption. Many people who have these services are not in the economic position to do so and others are physiologically opposed to it. Either way, that gardener's livelihood is sustained only by the largest of his or her customers, which is unsustainable. I believe that landscapers, house cleaners, construction workers and individual service providers like beauty salons are able to provide their services with the appropriate protection, thereby limiting health exposure effects. The social and economic advantage of opening up these services by far exceeds the risk. Ultimately, we should be lifting the SIP as the goal of public policy should not be to eliminate the risk of COVID-19, but rather to mitigate, manage and function as a society with it. This is all against the backdrop of our hospital system, which is overflowing with excess capacity. My broader opinion is SIP should be lifted May 4. Our state, county and city are the envy of the, of the country and yet we bear a massive economic and health cost every day we maintain these punitive measures. That concludes our pre-received public comment. I'm just going to take a peek at our attendees who are still with us. I have no one's hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. I just, I just want to make it clear in our communications as a city that it is the county that is making the decision on a lot of these things that impact what's closed. And we will find out how that changes the end of the week. And we can lobby the county, but in the end, it is not our decision. And I, I think there is some confusion about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
And I've spent a lot of time explaining the gardener role to people. But I'll do it here just in case. So I understand people are worried about gardeners and rightfully so. But to understand the logic behind that, the reason why there's a gardener role, my understanding initially was because, number one, you, you, a shelter in place order is different than a social distance order. Shelter in place order is to try to stop all movement within a jurisdiction or area because the aggregate movements of that jurisdiction add up. And so while one gardener may not seem like a big deal, a lot of gardeners moving around in aggregate actually is a big deal. And especially because gardeners go to supply, supply locations. And one of the reasons why you're, one of the things you're trying to do in a shelter in place, which is incredibly important, which we see breaking down now in our food supply and meat supply, is you're trying to protect your supply lines. So it's not a good idea when epidemic is out of control to have people going to supply locations over and over again because it can get into your truck drivers and get further down the chain. Secondarily, when they're moving around that much, they also are exposing themselves and bringing it back to their communities, which isn't a wonderful thing when the epidemic is out of control. So those people who you want to protect by giving them a paycheck, you're actually putting them in harm's risk and their families while the epidemic is out of control. So it's really important for people to understand that it was, it's not meant to be punitive. And there's actually real thought behind why in a shelter in place you shut it down but for everybody who is a necessary worker. But that being said, we're really close to moving out of that shelter in place order and moving back to a shelter in place with loosened social distance in some areas. But, you know, it's, I know it's incredibly frustrating, but, but the irony about a shelter in place is that when it works well, everyone's mad because there's a shelter in place. And that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. If there are, are not any more questions or comments from city council or a public comment, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for your presentation and information. And our remaining item on the agenda. Councilmember reports. Are there any councilmember reports? Do we have a report from the city manager?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.